Q to call the meeting to order. Do I hear an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved by Ms. Karen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Canfield. All in favor? Aye. Mr. Vanyani is running late due to a work issue. At this time, I would like to ask everyone for a moment of silence in recognition of the fact that it was 80 years ago today that Pearl Harbor was bombed by the Japanese. So if I can ask everyone to not drop anything, and we will have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. I will put in a plug. If you've never been to Pearl Harbor, it's really an extraordinary place to go to see. And I don't know if they're opened up again yet, but it's quite an experience. At any rate, now we're on to any walk-ins. Do we have any walk-ins yet? Yes, sir?
Hi.
By yourself, can you?
Yes. My name is Bill Brotham. I live in Silver.
Thank you.
If I could, I just want to read you a quick letter that I circulated through the West End. Dear West End neighbors, we've lived at 99 Booth Hill Road for over 30 years. Over the past 10 years or so, we've noticed a tremendous increase in the amount of heavy truck traffic rumbling through the West End. The West End roads weren't designed or built to accommodate heavy trucks. The roads are narrow. There's no shoulder. Walking or riding a bicycle is dangerous. The Violet Fields complex has been approved for construction. Access is off 3A across from Public Safety. The parade of construction vehicles cruising through this end of town will be endless. Upon completion, the complex went for 461 parking spaces, adding to the traffic entering 3A between Manlot and Booth Hill. The West End of Situate is used by many residents as a shortcut to Route 3. The West End shortcuts of both Marshfield and Ducksbury have been protected to ensure the safety of motorists and pedestrians, safety from hazardous heavy truck traffic through vehicle wave restrictions. I'd like to see our town follow suit and prohibit truck traffic over 2.5 tons from utilizing the West End as a shortcut to and from the highway. For Situate, the intersections of most concern are Clap Road and Grove Street, Manlot 3A, and Booth Hill 3A. I circulated a petition on change.org. It's got 131 signatures. I don't know. I can get as many as I want. I posted something on Facebook recently on the Situate Monthly site where I said, what's the worst intersection in Situate? And the top four were Henry Turner Bailey with 13 mentions, Branch and Country Way. Henry Turner Bailey in 3A was 13. Manlot with 100, and 3A with 103, and Booth Hill in 3A was 205. There were two accidents at the corner of 3A and Booth Hill Road in the past three weeks. We can put up, light up stop signs all the way to Clap Road. The problem isn't that people aren't stopping. The problem's bigger than that. So I know you can't do anything about 3A. It's a state road and whatever that means. But I think that you need to get rid of the large trucks up in the West End. Where the signs go and how that's done, I have suggestions, but... So I guess I'm here tonight to introduce myself and to see what steps I should take.
Jim, I think this is a matter for... Jim, traffic rules and regulations?
Ben, they said come here.
Oh, all right. All right.
Yeah, I'm trying. I mean, we did one 100 years ago when I was in Noel for Bridge Street. I know you have to do a traffic count to see how many trucks, things like that are there. You have to identify an alternative route, and you're going to get the state involved because it intersects with 3A. So it's not just something the board can do themselves. We'll have to talk to Chief Thompson whether our radar truck can count trucks like that.
I got a game.
That'll be the first one. Yeah.
So they don't, they belong here at this point with this request? We put it on a future agenda?
It would have to come out of here, yeah, to the state, and then we would have to go through... Kevin might know. I just don't remember all the steps. There was a lot of steps in Noel. It was the Bridge Street Bridge that they put a truck ban on.
Right. Yes. The project...
It has been, anyway, it's gotten its eligibility from the state, so it's an eligible project. They have not filed any paperwork with the town yet as to what, who, when, where. It's just, it's gone to the state. State said, yep, this is an eligible 40B project. Still has to come back and go through the whole town process.
So one point of, so one portion of your very important, thank you for bringing this to our attention, is construction vehicles, all of that stuff. And that has, in other projects, been something that you're looking at as a condition?
It's only Board of Appeals. It's only Board of Appeals for 40B.
It's only Board of Appeals. It is a town authority to say, okay, you can't have it this way or that or whatever. So that would be something that you're working on. You know, it might be something we brought because I'm the one that's doing that.
I don't know if you're familiar with the situation in Marshfield, but the entire West End of Marshfield, on the west side of 3A, no trucks over 2.5 tons. And the statement on A Court Street?
I'm not agreeing with, disagree with you. I'm saying there's a process that we would have to go through.
Oh, I understand.
The board just can't make that determination.
No, my point is if you put temporary thing for the construction vehicles with, yeah, okay, that's, what's that, six months or a year? Then we'll be right back to where we are now. It's scary walking up there. It really is. There's guardrails that are, you know, 12 inches off the side of the road. There's no way two trucks can get past me. So...
I recognize it's, yeah.
Could you copy that, copy that letter?
Yeah, sure. So I guess my question is then, where do I go from here?
We have to task it on the agenda as an agenda item, and then the board will make a decision.
About what steps?
Yeah.
Ms. Karen?
I would just like to say I have spoken to Chief Stewart in the past. I live on the West End. I wish I knew you were doing this. I've had 18-wheelers take out the island that I take care of multiple times that go by my house.
At Booth Hill Road?
Uh, no, at First Parish in Grove Street. So I'm happy to be your liaison on this and work with you on it because I couldn't agree with you more. The stop and shop trucks have to stop going through the West End to get to Cohasset. So it's more than, it's not just construction. It's GPS, it's, you know, it's ways.
I mean, I'm going to email Chief Thompson. We can do some enforcement up there, slow the trucks down. If there are a lot of trucks there, we can see if the state police truck unit will come out.
Will they allow it?
Doesn't matter. State police truck unit comes out, they weigh all the trucks, they go through all the trucks for safety equipment. So when they know the state police are there, they will avoid that area like the plague for a while. And they tell them, once they pull up, everybody calls us, don't go there. So we'll talk to Chief Thompson in the intro about doing some enforcement up there and slowing them down and maybe getting the state police to rattle a couple cages for overloaded trucks or trucks that don't have the proper safety equipment.
I have ways on that phone, and I just add a cop across the street all the time.
Good strategy.
That's genius.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to send a letter so you have my contact information.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Anybody else? Nope. All right. Shall we go on to the report of the town administrator? Mr. Boudreau?
Got to finish my email. Quick update today. We have finished our water main construction for the season. No more water main construction going on. Services on Brook, Tilden, Rainbow Court, and Foam Road will continue to install those until all those homes are hooked up. Testing and training of employees on the green sand filter, 17A, is continuing. The pilot study for the water treatment plant is done for now. We are expecting a report middle of this month on the preliminary testing that was done down there. The consultant will be back later on this winter to do cold water testing. And again, for people who don't know, the piloting is to determine exactly what the best treatment method is for our water, for when we build a new water treatment plant. The water department is done flushing for the season. They finished that last week. Hopefully, if we have enough water over the winter, we'll be back in the spring. They were very pleased with the results that they saw last week. They got some good results getting those pipes cleaned, so I think it's having an effect. Our brownwater complaints were way, way down this year. And as long as we can continue the flushing and the pipe replacement program, we expect it to keep going down in the future. COVID cases for the past week was 40 down from 47. Our positivity rating was 5.17, up from 4.14. The state was at 7.4.74, sorry, up from 3.37, up over 4. Those numbers are going up across the board. We expected that with the cold weather in Thanksgiving. The new variant, Omicron, is now in Massachusetts. It has been discovered. We don't have a lot of information about this variant at this point. Preliminary indications are that if you're vaccinated and you get the Omicron variant, the symptoms are mild to nonexistent. So we are urging everybody who has not been vaccinated to please do so. If you're eligible for a booster, you need to get your booster. Pfizer and Moderna, six months after your second shot. Johnson &amp; Johnson, two months after your single shot, you are eligible for a booster. The Situate Board of Health will be having a booster clinic next Monday and Tuesday from 9:00 to 11:30 and 1:00 to 3:30 at the Board of Health. The link for signups is on the town news feed and on the Board of Health webpage. You must register in advance. We have about 200 doses of Moderna coming in, so if you're looking for a Moderna booster, go to the website. The links are up. You can sign up. First 200 people will give those doses out, all those two. DBW crews are still on the road picking up debris from the recent storm. We've made a lot of progress. We still have some isolated pockets that we're working on. They'll continue doing that until we get it all. Our weather prevents it. Right now, we are in storm prep mode. If you've seen the forecast, we are expecting some snow for tomorrow, which is, you know, I used to like snow, but now that I have to pay to remove it, it's just like money falling from the sky. I can't stand it anymore. So we are expecting some snow, not a lot of accumulation, but we will have some probably at least sanding and salting over the next couple of days. Widows Walk Clubhouse is moving along. The Pro Shop has a temporary CO, so Ian and the staff are in. It looks great. The bathrooms are done. The kitchen installation is going on now. I was down there today. A lot of that equipment is in. It is looking very good. We need to get the floor down and the clubhouse space and finish that up, but it's really taking shape. The RFP, Nancy worked on that. We reviewed it with Ian today. The RFP for the operator of the clubhouse and the restaurant will go out tomorrow, and we will open it on the 18th of January, soon we get back. Just for the board, it is really geared towards getting the best vendor we can as opposed to getting the most money that we can. So we want to make sure we get a vendor who's really going to run a first-class operation, be there for a while, and then we can worry about what we're going to get out of them once they get up and running and see how it looks. But we're excited for that. The board wants to go down and take a look. It really is coming out nice. Let me know. You can get in and see what it looks like. But I think everybody's going to be really, really happy when that's finished and we get the coffees back in there in the spring. Finally, I know Chief Murphy is here. The Hummer Rock Fire Station has a temporary CO. The fire department is off the cliff. They're back in the Hummer Rock Station. It looks pretty good, and we will have a ribbon cutting on the 17th at, what, 10:00 AM. And that's what I have for tonight.
Thank you. Questions from the board? No? Mrs. Canfield?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. On to our next agenda item. Discuss vote donations to the Town of Situate. We have Chief Murphy here with a laundry list of things.
Oh, good.
All of which are appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So I'll start off with the donations, and the first donation is from Joe and Karen Kelly, who are here tonight. Joe and Karen, they made a donation, a ceremonial flag, a 20 by 30 flag that we use for special occasions that we hang from our ladder truck, and they donated this. We were in search of one. We used to borrow Cohasset all the time, and they donated this in the memory of their son, Sergeant Michael Kelly, who lost his life in the service. So we want to thank you, Karen and Joe, for your generous donation to the fire department, and we'll make sure that's used respectfully for many events in town. We'll check them up.
I have to say, it flew on the top of the ladder truck at the Veterans Day celebration. Yes. It's absolutely spectacular, and we thank you very much. It's just beautiful. And I didn't know we were borrowing flags from other towns.
Yeah.
So it's nice to have our own.
I didn't realize that myself until we got involved this year with various activities that would involve a flag. For an example, when we unveiled the Purple Hot Sign, we borrowed a flag from Cohasset. When we did the Chair of Honor at the high school, we borrowed it again from Cohasset. When the football team did something on 9/11 weekend, okay, they had a game and they wanted a flag, Cohasset was already using their flag for that weekend. It's understandable. So we got one from Newton, all the way from Newton. So that was it. When I heard that, again, thank you, Newton, but there's nothing wrong with having our own flag here in Situate. So Karen and I decided to gift a flag in Michael's honor, a 20-foot by 30-foot American flag, and it flew on 9/11, uh, no, excuse me, November 11th, Veterans Day, at where we had that event, and it was just awesome. It takes two people to put it on the ladder.
Ladder truck, yeah.
And it takes maybe three people to take it off the ladder truck. It's a big flag. Doesn't look that big when it's 100 and so feet in the air, but...
Oh, it does. It's a big flag. It's a big flag.
So it's really something to be proud of, to actually have a flag that we can call our own here in town. I think it's very, very important. And the next opportunity to fly the flag would be December 18th, which is Reeds Across America. That would be a beautiful opportunity to fly the flag when we place the Reeds at Cudworth Cemetery. So we can...
Tell me the time will be there.
Okay. Well, I think about 11 o'clock. If you could bring the truck at Cudworth?
Never miss an opportunity. Check that off.
That's me. I may go. So in the back, Karen wrote, "Given in loving memory of Sergeant Michael J. Kelly, November 11, 2021." We put that date because that's the first time it was introduced to the town.
Yes.
So that's for you, sir.
Thank you.
Take it, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Mr. and Mrs. Kelly, thank you very much, especially honoring your son. We really appreciate it.
There isn't a day that doesn't go by that we haven't found an opportunity to think and talk about Michael. Because that's our therapy, believe it or not, to lose a son in war, killed in action 16 years ago. We talk about him and think about him every single day. Thank you.
I can imagine you do that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly.
Okay, that was nice. So second, we have a donation that originally came from the Historical Society towards the restoration of the 1938 fire pumper. So that was given to the group of retired firefighters to start, get the ball rolling. They also got, I think, $63,000 in CPC. So that $4,000, in order to utilize that towards this, we're going to buy a canopy for the truck to be held and worked on adjacent to the auto mechanic place at the Votech in Hanover. So that money was donated to the town. In turn, the town, we have ordered a canopy to house that truck. It's going to take probably about a year and a half to get done what they get done. I think they're resonating June of '23 to have that refurbishment done. So they're going to do as much as they can in the truck, and it's going to save the town a lot of money and hopefully get that, because once they sent it out to a private vendor, it was like double what they asked for. So I think this is going to go a long way with the Votech doing that work, and this donation is going to the town from that group, but really from the Historical Society, the $4,000. So we thank the Historical Society, the group of members, the retirees that put forward, and the Votech for their cooperation in getting this done. Yeah, very good teamwork. Thank you. And the next donation is from Petroselli Adjustors, Paul and Mark Petroselli. They live in town. They're boaters, so they donate $1,000 every year to us, and they like to see that money go towards the dive team equipment. They're both mariners. They have boats in the harbor, as I said. So that's a $1,000 donation from them that we get annually. So we thank the Petroselli Adjustors, Markan and Paul Petroselli, for their generous donation. Next, the rest of these last four are from, for the Hummer Rock Fire Station. Kevin Barberi, who's a resident in town, I think you know Kevin. He owns Office Resources for Furniture, and he donated the bulk of the furniture for the fire station, about $8,000 worth of furniture. He was very, right up front, he wanted to do this. He came to us, actually, and said, I want to take care of this. He said, as a son, when he was a kid, his mom would take him down to Hummer Rock, and he'd park and go to Hummer Rock. His mom was always very nice to the firefighters, and they let him use the bathroom. So he says it's payback time.
Smart.
Yes. So he wanted to, he had a lot of good memories down there, and he wanted to do something nice, and he heard what we were doing with the project, and things were tight, so he goes, listen, I want to donate the furniture. So Kevin donated the furniture for the bulk of the furniture. Like I said, just under $8,000. So we want to thank Kevin Barberi and his family for the generous donation. So it's greatly appreciated. The next one is from George Washington Toma. They basically gave our appliances down there at cost with free delivery. They offered this. We didn't ask for that. They said, you know what? We want, this is a good project. We want to make sure this is done, and we want to do our part. And the donation, the discount they gave was just over $1,100 for the kitchen appliances at Station 4.
Lucky you could get them.
Yeah, right. Right. So we took what they had in stock, so.
Yeah.
But that worked out well. We thank them. Hanger Lumber, as we know, I'll sort of combine, the South Shore Votech is going to be building the handicap ramp. They've been down there already, staking everything out. They're getting ready to pour the footings. And with that, the labor, the lumber that we estimated a couple of years ago, obviously the prices have gone up. So I talked to Tom McDalte of Hanger Lumber, and just to the situation we're in, you know, and asked him recommendations on how to do this, and he said, listen, I'll make this work for the money you have. And we're estimating that's probably about a $3,000 donation getting a lumber, you know, maybe not a cost, but definitely a reduced price for this project. He loves that the Votech is doing the project, doing the... So the handicap ramp has started, and the next two or three weeks, they'll be out there. We believe it'll probably even finish by Christmas time. So all these important donors to make Station 4 come together. It looks great. Really pleased. We're still going through punch list stuff on upper S, but they moved in last Friday. The furniture came Friday. It's supposed to come Wednesday, but the furniture came Friday. Mattress just came Friday. Guys get in there. The other thing, as Jim mentioned earlier, is that, you know, it's getting cold, so we have to get that fire. It's got a 500-gallon water tank on there. So we did some, you know, some precautions that we had to do to keep it from freezing, but we pushed everybody hard at the end to get in there December 1st, and we get in there December 3rd. And it's a great station. It's going to be there for decades. It's all flood resistant, you know, FEMA codes. So hope to see you there next Friday, the 17th, at 10:00 AM. You know, if we can do sort of an open house ribbon cutting. And, you know, again, with all these donations, it really makes, we're trying to make this thing come under budget, and we're going to make it happen. So thank you for all the donations we received.
Well, we appreciate the generosity of our community and beyond.
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Does anyone on the board want to?
I just want to thank Chief for championing this because it was a lot of work to pull together all the resources and well overdue for that group down there to get that station fixed up. So thank you.
You were there the time we did the Eagles Project, the Eagle Scouts Project, and the flag outside, beautiful, but you go inside that station. It was 80 years old.
Right.
You know, and the storms of '18, it was two or three inches away from the floorboards and getting into the building. So we knew at that point that we had to do, you know, a replacement, and I think we did it as cost effectively as we could with the support of the board, Jim, Nancy, and many others. So we're very appreciative of that, and I think it came out very nice.
You got to see it. Andrew?
Kind of echo that same sentiment. It has been sometimes a struggle, but the fact that we're at this stage and all these folks to step up and the students at the Votech School, the help, the whole community spirit of it all is just wonderful. So just thanks to everyone who's done it.
Get one complaint down at Hummer Rock. They're all driving by and looking and happy, so they're very ecstatic that they're getting into the fire station down there. So it's, yeah, like I said, it looks nice. It's very functional for us. We have all the technology that we have here at all the other stations now, so it's going to be a long time coming.
Yes, thank you. I would like to put the select board's separate donations. A 20 by 37 flag from Joe and Karen Kelly, and their son Sergeant Michael J. Kelly. $4,000 from the City of City Fire Restoration Committee, and the fire truck. Diet equipment from Desert Town Petroselli and Dusters, and equipment and donations for the Hummer Rock Station 4 from Kevin Barberi, who lost resources for furniture. George Washington Toma, discount on appliances. Karen Lumber, discount on materials and lumber. And South Shore National School Students for Labor and Government. Second? Second, Ms. Karen. All in favor? Aye. Thank you to all. And now, you're next on the agenda. Would you like to tell us about this refurbishment? I believe it's a truck?
Yeah, it's a fire truck. So one of our pumpers. It's an '05 fire truck. So we try to get 25 years out of our fire trucks. So at 15 years, you know, from blistering, from being assaulted, basically what they're going to do is they're going to strip the whole truck, take everything off, mirrors, trim, all the side doors, everything, and they sand it last, they sand it, they strip it down, and they're going to do a whole new paint job. Any type of rot that's on there underneath, they check the whole truck inside and they'll replace any rubber gaskets and the doors that need to be replaced. So, you know, when it comes out, it'll look like a new fire truck again. And, you know, the goal is to get 25 years out of our trucks to make them cost effective, and it'll go back. This will actually be stationed down at Station 4 with the new station. So right now, they're using one of the older trucks, and when this is done, they'll go down there probably sometime in February, I'm guessing.
Not retiring, right? So Hummer Rock?
No, no. This is going right back into action. So we're going to clean it up and put it right back into action down there. So it's, we appreciate the support of the town on this, and it was a $68,000 bid from M&amp;R Autobody, who actually does most of the work on the fire trucks on the South Shore. So they're very experienced, and we're happy they got the contract, and it's, you know, it's time to move forward and get this done.
Are you assuming this is on the capital plan budget?
It was. It was approved in evil.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's what we're requesting, is the...
Questions from the board? Ms. Canfield?
Yeah, no way. Went up to bid. I can send you all the bid specs if you need to, but basically, like I said, they're going to take this truck in, they're going to strip it down. Any metal, we'll take the mirrors off, they'll take all the side doors off. It's going to be stripped down, sand blasted, repainted, and it's going to be put back on with new stainless hardware, new gaskets, new materials. So they'll check underneath for any rotting.
Um, we do have a lot less rot now. We had a truck, it was back in 2016, that had significant rot underneath due to the saltwater. But, uh, we coat everything now with almost like a wax every, every, this time of year. It's actually being done as we speak this week. So to make sure that over the winter months that, uh, we have, uh, resistant to that corrosion of going through saltwater and the salt there. So, and the salt from the streets. So it's, uh, we were very proactive in that. So we don't expect a lot of rot underneath there. But we'll get, you know, it'll look like a new fire truck when it's done.
Any other questions? Nope. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. Uh, they can make it up if you want.
Okay.
Is the M&amp;R Autobody contract on the agenda?
I know, it's on the agenda. Move to award the contract to M&amp;R Autobody, um, for the refurbishing of a fire pumper not to exceed $68,000.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Good week, John Snow.
Yeah. Glad to talk.
I didn't wear.
Um, I understand, I was surprised about this. They're trying to afford a $30,000, $30,000.
Oh, is Widows Walk here?
No, Nancy and I will do it.
Probably Nancy.
This company just, they reached out to the golf course. They had rolls of turf left over from a job they were doing, uh, asked if we could use them. Ian said absolutely, they're going to put them down up at the driving range to clean that area up, make it a little bit more usable. And they're going to drop them off and just donate them to us. So that was pretty good and Ian will make good use of that donation. It'll look really nice up there when he gets it done.
Questions?
No, I was just, how the heck did we get a donation from Tennessee? So I was just curious as to the connection, but very grateful for it. Nobody knows? Okay.
It's a mystery, apparently.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just, they approached Dan. Maybe that guy played golf or something to somebody or another. They approached Dan, asked if he wanted it.
All right. Okay.
Who knows? It's great. Thank you, Zoe. Zoe McG, Zoe.
Move that the select board accept a donation of artificial turf for Widows Walk Golf Course.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor? Aye. Four nothing, motion carries. Thank you for pointing that out. Next we have discuss, vote, Town of Situate Library Generator Purchase and Installation Authorization. I see Kevin Kelly is here. How are you tonight?
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Would you like to tell us about this generator?
The generator? I'd be happy to.
I thought the library had a generator.
It does not.
This has been going on for.
I know, forever.
Over two years.
Well, the two year, and longer than that because there was discussion of putting it in during construction, but that got vetoed also. So, anyway. So, uh, oh, two years ago, we had an original budget proposal for $210,000 to install a full generator, full coverage. Um, because during construction, there was discussion of doing partial coverage. But the numbers are so close, we've recommended we do full coverage. Uh, at the time, the select board asked for more information and options to do that. And we've been working on that since then with many obstacles. But we are now here tonight to finally put together something that we think will work. So we hired Costantini Engineering. They were the original electrical contractor, electrical engineer, uh, on the library job. And they wrote us a specification and bid documents for the generator. That then came back higher than our original $210,000, um, what we were looking at. So then we reached out to Joe Anisi, who is a retired electrical contractor engineer, uh, on the Public Building Committee and also a local generator company who services many of our generators. And we value engineered the Costantini proposal. And we were able to take a lot of things out and do a lot of things differently, which will work fine. The engineers in agreement with what we're doing. And I now have a proposal, a budget number to, to do the job. They provided some numbers there. And we are looking for $157,000 by the board to be released to the Public Building Commission to approve the installation of the generator. Uh, the Public Building Commission is on board with this installation. It's going to be a national, natural gas generator. Uh, the lead time on this is six months. Um, so we'd like to, if we get the approval tonight, then we'll be able to, because of the way it's set up and the pricing of it versus, uh, materials and installation, we'll be able to get three prices off the state contract list in order to do that. So that will save some time, being able to bid it that way. Um, and probably in June, if everything goes well, come June, we'll be able to, well, hopefully, put the unit in. There is a possibility of a shutdown of the library, but we carried a number for a temporary generator, um, which we could probably avoid that. But we'll, we'll discuss that when we get a contractor on board and see what the logistics of everything would be.
So the shutdown you're talking about would be for the duration of the installation process?
Right. When they get to the point that they have to transfer the po, you know, hook up the both different systems. We either shut down or we, um, do a temporary generator. Um, I think because of the building and the components and types of things and the, the temporary generator is, I don't want to say only $2,800 or $3,200, but for that number, we should probably just keep the building live. But we'll determine all that when we get to that stage.
Questions from the board? Yes.
My other question is the funding source? The library project still has, sorry, the library project still has $224,000 available.
Yeah, that's great.
Kevin said this has been a long, thank you for keeping on board.
Agreed. Nope, that was my question too, just where was the money coming from?
Andrew?
Thanks, Andrew. I mean, um, sorry.
It's quite all right. Um, no, no, I'm just, I'm just going through the history of my mind and how we're here.
It'll be great to protect the asset. That's, from, from my position, that's the biggest thing. And then with the last power outage, the last storm we had last month, you know, we had a really great response with people coming to the senior center to use it as a charging center and warming center. And, you know, if we had a storm like that in the middle of January, it's really hard for us to protect a place like the library with, you know, freeze ups and those types of things. So, you know, it would be used to protect the investment, but also we'd be able to provide things to the residents for a warming center, charging center, those types of things. So it'd be great.
I'm glad to hear it's natural gas because when the propane companies, when we have an outage, they price gouge. So it's good to have natural gas.
Yes.
I have a motion, I would like to move that the select board orders purchase installation of a new generator for the Situate Town Library at $157,000.
Sorry, Karen, there's a new motion. There's a new motion. They kind of, sorry about that. All right. I would say that. I would like to move that the Public Building Commission amount not to exceed $157,000 for the purchase and installation of a full coverage generator for the library as detailed in the. Second? Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor? Aye. Four nothing, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Curran.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thank you. We're on it.
Finally. Next, it's our 710 interview board and committee applicants. We have an applicant for the Cable TV Committee, Alexander Pease. Would you like to come up?
Thank you.
Induce yourself, please.
My name is Alexander Pease. I've been a resident of Situate for all my life. I go to UMass Boston currently and I work full time in Norwood. What caught my eye when there was an availability was the fact that I had always wanted to get involved in cable TV when I was in high school. Graduated in 17 and that vacancy made me want to act on it. So I have a few ideas as to what I would want to do and I think there's some boards to be filled in cable TV. Maybe there's some kind of conjunction that could be possible between, say, the situation, the, uh, publication for the high school and cable TV. So we can expand the audience from just print to actual cable TV. That is something I haven't talked about with anybody. It's just an idea I've had. Again, there are other ideas that I have as far as giving students the opportunity to go on to community TV and have that be closely associated with what they are learning in the classroom. So you might find key policy issues, key debates in, um, Washington or on Beacon Hill that could be brought up in class. And they could use that as a medium to see what is being talked about in relation to their class. So my general outlook is to connect education, whether it be K through 12 or high school, uh, to cable TV because there is absolutely a disconnect between my age group, those younger than me, um, in cable TV, which I think has a lot more to offer.
Mrs. Curran has been our representative liaison.
Looked that up, didn't you?
No, I just, I have topped my head to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for quite a few years. So I thought maybe you'd like to start off the questions.
I would love to. I love your ideas, which is great. And I think a lot of what they're moving to as well is streaming also.
Streaming?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, so I know the current cable committee has been looking at that. I honestly don't know the last time they got together just because of COVID. So I don't think they've gotten together.
They were meeting quite a bit before COVID, but since then it's been.
It's been a little bit.
How many members are on the board?
I want to say maybe four.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's off top of my head.
Sure.
If it's still there. But I think it would be terrific to have your perspective.
Sure.
And certainly have heard in the past, the need to connect education, right, and high, uh, higher ed, high school, sorry, um, education with it. So I, I love your ideas. I think you'd be a great asset. And your energy, so, which is nice.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Goodrich?
I did, no, I, I concur. I think your, your energy, uh, is wonderful and talking about the different, I mean, you hear about it in the news or everywhere, that every company now is a media company.
Say that again?
Every company has to be a media company.
Sure.
And every town has to tell their story. It's all about telling stories and how do you get people to talk about that? Um, I would, if going forward, I would just remember sometimes the pace of local government sometimes.
Government moves slow.
Yeah, uh, sometimes glacially.
Glacially.
Yes, to make sure that.
Don't say that.
The ship is there. So, you know, to have, to make sure that there's patience, um, work to make sure that these things are going to be coming through well. And I know they will. And it is a wonderful committee and they do have these great ideas going forward. But I think your, your outlook is connecting it to education.
And again, patience is a virtue and I think with collaboration, we can find, uh, common ground to expedite the process, you know, if we find a consensus, which is what I'm working towards and would love to be a part of.
Excellent.
Part-time.
Oh, okay.
Part-time student, full-time working. I do have, uh, weeknights available. Would be happy to commit to one or two particular weeknights. Don't know what the schedule looks like.
Usually that's the other thing, but it is committed to board.
Sure. Yep.
No, I think it's very plentiful to raise your hand and, uh, I think that it's greatly impressive and enthusiastic, but yeah, so, yeah, remember how we have, you know, all these, we're like, we're like a bowling alley to the lovers. So it just takes a while.
Sure.
So, uh, it's great. Thank you for coming in.
All right.
I want to put words without my mouth. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. And I think we'll be voting at the end of the night.
Okay.
So don't feel like you have to stay. Sometimes these meetings run very long.
Okay. Well, if I do get one way or the other, will someone be able to reach out to me?
Yes.
Excellent.
And have you met Seth Viper?
I have not.
You should probably make yourself known to him. He's a great guy. He does all of our work and it's been a.
For cable TV?
Yeah.
Can you say that name one more time?
Seth. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, listen.
It's been a, a trying year for people in all this technology that we're trying to bring to people and so, and Seth's cable TV has been crucial to us, so.
For sure.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Do you want us to wait?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now we have, um, five candidates or all the candidates here for the Housing Authority?
Uh, they're all invited.
Okay. Oh, and we're going to.
All right.
All right.
We have Mr. Dewayne, who's supposed to be here, but he was unable to make it due to a family emergency. But Jill Catherine is here.
Oh, yes. Yes.
President, President of Housing Authority.
Jill.
Any questions around that?
Very good. Well, shall we have the first, this, we're going to do this alphabet, not alphabetical in the order it's on my agenda. Uh, Thomas Gorman, if you'd come forward, please. If you could, uh, give us your name and address and briefly tell us why you're interested in the Situate Housing Authority position.
It's a pleasure to be here, Karen. My name is Thomas Gorman and I live at 60 Wheeler Park Drive. And, uh, I've been in Situate 50 years. I love Situate. My family has all been brought up here. And we are now residing at Wheeler Park for some five years. And I was really excited when I saw that a tenant was allowed to be on the board because I think that transparency is very important, uh, to find out what the tenants need and that they're met. And I think it must be a horrendous job for the director of, uh, local housing, where you get Wheeler Park, Lincoln, Central, uh, and they all have so many needs. And I think it's great to have a tenant involved in that. Uh, I've, um, my background, I've had about 40 years in customer service management, dealing with customers and complaints, trying to resolve them patiently and, and making sure they, uh, they're answered and, and they get a response. I was in customer service to the point where I, all of a sudden, they were automated and now you dial one, dial two, dial three, and I think most people are not getting the response they want. And I think being, having a tenant on the, on the board is advantageous to the tenants themselves to realize that they're going to be represented. I think sometimes tenants feel lost. Is anyone looking at them? Do they know what they need? Are the citizen's calls being responded to quickly enough? There's a lot, a lot going into running such a large complex. And yet the tenants don't realize how much work is involved in it. And that's why I was interested in being a representative, so that I can oversee and see exactly what's going on and feel in my own mind that they're being responded to. And I, I think, I've been here five years and I love it. I love my apartment I'm in. I enjoy it and I, but I, there's a loss. I think somehow or other, there has to be a response and a communication. And so I really value that. And, um, I've had 30 years in customer service management. Uh, I managed the, in at Situate Harbor for about 10 years. And, uh, I've done management jobs for years and I love it. I love community, communicating with people and responding to them and making sure that they have representation and at least they're responded to. You know, there's not a dead end. Somebody is there to represent them. And I think this is very important. And this is an excellent time for any one of these people that are candidates to get involved and support the tenants in the area. And I, I think it's very important.
Thank you. Very thorough answer. Mr. Goodrich, any questions?
You can back to me? Please.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Sure, no, I'll go. Um, thank you for coming forward and, um, I love your perspective. You're absolutely right, the residents need representation. Um, have you thought about, um, just one way in which you would reach out to them? You know, what would be that proactive step that you would, your first step that you would take should you be appointed?
One of the first steps is I love communication. And I look at the board, the first thing I do when I go into the community center is look at the board. And there are old messages on there. They should be removed. The COVID messages should be updated. There's a lot of things, you know, and I think those are things that even tenants can There's a lot of things, you know, and I think those are things that even tenants can get involved in.
And you're okay posting those things at all three properties, being that liaison for all three?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think you should understand that there are three complexes. And that's part of the thing is, oh, I don't get my service right away. It's maybe, how is that time on a maintenance man allocated as to being able to effectively reach these people on a timely basis? Peter?
Yes.
No, I have the feeling we're in that wonderful position we normally are that there are always great people who want to help them and we're in a good shape. They come forward and they answer us or look at, you know, what we're looking for on board. Making sure that our residents are happy and heard and responded to is, in my mind, the most important thing.
I appreciate the time that these people take. I watch you all the time on TV and I was excited to be here. It's nice to be involved in the process. But I think that it's a good position and it's a needed position.
So the one uncomfortable question always comes up is, as anyone that has served in public service knows, that we have the right intentions, but then you're also the point person. So if they're unhappy, they're going to come to you.
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes. Haven't been in the customer service area for a number of years. I'm used to that. You know, and I, I have to have the satisfaction that whoever I'm responding to at least got the answer. Even if you can't do it, why you can't do it, that's important.
Great. Mr. Goodrich.
So, being a bit uncomfortable, so I'll ask it. So how do you think the maintenance has been? And how would you describe it?
I think basically the maintenance as far as appealing in the apartment, coming to service a faucet leak or something of this nature or stove being out, this type thing, I think they respond fairly well. I don't like the landscaping, all this meat. I think somehow, whether it's encouraging people to establish the gardens in front of their units to make it more attractive. I get out with a rake all the time during the fall and rake all the leaves and bag them and deliver them to the dealer. Because I want that done because I'm that proud of the property that I'm at. Even though that's not my land, I live there and I want that aspect. And I think that should be translated to the tenants that they can get involved in that also. And so I think that's the type of responses. Responsibility that you need is individual tenants feel proud of the area they're in. The maintenance, I think, is good. I think they're short-staffed. And I don't know if it's a budget situation, and that's the things that I'd like to get involved in to see where that's going.
Thank you very much. I'd like to suggest that because there are multiple properties, whoever takes this position, they would be the elected or appointed position. But, you know, maybe you have a liaison at each of the properties to be your eyes and ears and you can, you know, maybe have informal counsel of people so that you're not the only person. Sometimes you need to be able to bounce ideas off of others, so. But we're very happy to have this, you know, position here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. And we have Susan Jackson. Hello.
Hello. Obviously, I'm Susan Jackson.
Yes.
I'm in Viv 35 Lincoln Park Drive.
Thank you very much. And a similar question to you. Why are you interested in this position?
Well, I'd like to be an asset to the community as well as the housing community. I've lived in Lincoln Park for six years. I also was a former owner of properties, tenements in the worst parts of New Bedford, which we brought from disrepair fully up to repairing, to the point where Section 8 didn't even go through the properties anymore. They came to the door.
I'm glad to hear that because the way you started, I was like, oh, where is this going? Tenements?
Oh, yeah. And, you know, they, we know both sides. You know, that I can see, I listen to the tenants. I listen to their complaints. But I also know that funds are short and the tenants don't see that. They need to be more aware of both sides of the playing area. I'm concerned with safety issues mainly for the tenants. That's my number one priority. There are suggestions that I would have to, something that you had mentioned, I was going to mention about liaisons in each development. Now, I, reading the rules, it sounds like we cannot do one-on-ones. When I was reading in the laws of what we can do and what we can't do, it says you can have meetings, but you can't go and do one-on-ones. You know, because if it were my way, I'd like to go through the whole thing and talk to people because I'm listening to things that haven't been done for years. I know people say originally on the original contracts, the houses were supposed to be painted every five years, the apartments. One of my friends has lived there, I think, for 20 years. It wasn't painted when she went in and it hasn't been painted since. You know, at our property, 30, Lincoln Park, there's a mildew issue in the brick building, the two-floor brick building. There is the system for the apartments that don't have windows in the bathrooms. That has not worked well and they tried to turn it on once last year and they shut it right down because it sounded like, you know, engines going all day long.
Logan Airport, huh?
And banging noises, so, you know. But there are different things that I feel, I don't know that we don't have permission. I've heard things that we're not supposed to do things. There are little things like cleaning the yards. What can we do as tenants that are we allowed to do? I know we're allowed to have little gardens, so then why couldn't we clean up the yard? Why can't we have a little weed whacker and take that job away from the guys who don't have enough time to do the jobs they need to do to keep the property safe? And, I mean, I think we only had our grass cut three times this year. I mean, and I know our head maintenance guy is a very nice guy, but I think he needs more training. Do we provide that for them? You know, do we give them lessons in, or could we even donate time to them to help them do priority lists, setting up scheduling? I mean, things that the three guys do not have time to do. And we have so many people who want jobs. We don't need to see the people who live there. We don't, their records. We're not asking to see what everybody's paying or doing in their personal lives. We're not interested in that. The people I've talked to, we would like to contribute to the community and clean it up and do the little things that we're allowed to do without saying, no, you can't do that. You know, I just changed like four of the apartment batteries on the thermostats we got two years ago. They were all blinking and because I had apartments, everybody said, well, what does that mean, Sue? And I said, it means you need new batteries. So, but we're not really allowed, although I did get permission from the office to go into the apartments that I'm friendly with and put batteries in. But a lot of those people, I think they would break the thermostats because you have to pull it straight off. And, but I mean, little things like that, that the guys don't have time to do. You know, it's such a waste of their time where it could be placed on more valuable things. You know, I, there are different things that I don't understand, like in Central Park, why is there a need to lock the dumpster up on weekends in it at night? You know, why is there, the new tenants coming in aren't allowed to use storage in the basement? You have to be grandfathered in now. These are things I don't understand. And, you know, it's, I mean, little things like that, that to me, that means there's waste building up in the apartments. You know, if somebody is out, I mean, there are still people who are working. If they can't get home before the dumpster is locked at night, you know, how about on weekends, you know? You know, you might have, suppose you have company, not too many people do, but.
Those are all the dumpsters at all the facilities or just Central Park?
Just Central Park. So, and we, as far as I know, we're not grandfathered in to use our, the brick building basement, but I can't go over there because I have asthma and I've had two asthma attacks in that basement. So, and things like that and buildings like that, I don't know. I know they fixed up the main building. I don't know what they did in the basement. They should have put a French drain in. In the brick building, there should be a French drain in that cellar to clear up that mildew. You know, but where's the money? And that's another issue. Where do we get the proper financing? How can we go forward to get more financing for the issues that are health-related? You know, there should be a bar on every tub to get in and out of. I mean, I heard three years ago that we were getting shower units. I, no one I know has received one, but we have a lot of really old people there who are frail. And they all need a bar to grab onto at the edge of the tub, even one. They don't need five, but one. You know, little things like that. You know, some of the older people might need one near the toilet to pull themselves up. I mean, there are, I could go on and on and on. There are, every day and you listen to the stories in my own apartment.
Well, you're very observant and I'd like to ask my fellow board members questions. We have someone calling in who can't make it in for one of our upcoming hearings, so that's what this is all about.
Okay, that's fine. Can you hear me, Mr. Dwyer?
I'm still stuck. I'm not being able to get a bar or someone getting in and out of the tub. Sorry, I was just getting upset. I guess I want to go to kind of the outreach question a little bit. How would you kind of envision a communication piece of talking to other residents and other folks? I know we talked about the challenges of one-on-one, but what would be kind of...
I haven't, I've driven through Wheeler Park. I have not been into their community room. I've been in Central Park and I've been in Lincoln Park. I'm assuming that Wheeler Park has a community room. So I think what I would like to see is a suggestion sheet of not just complaints about things that haven't, need to be done in each apartment. Because in my own apartment, when we just had the inspections, there were like three or four things that were two ladies told will to do. And one of them is I don't have a board on, we all have gas stoves in Lincoln Park. I have not from day one had that metal sheet that goes to the side of my stove. My side of my thing is turning black. I'm going out and buying my own. They keep saying it's coming. I've been there six years. So to me, that's a fire hazard. You know? So, I mean, I haven't had a lock on one of my front windows since the day I moved in. You know, these are just small issues, but how many apartments are like that? You know, so those, to me, there were no, at Central Park, there were no lights on if you're facing it, the left side of the building. My friend moved in July and her family was willing to pay for the lights to be fixed. From the, one of the other tenants, she said, there have been no lights outside for six years that she's been in the other outside apartment. So they finally get the lights going, but why isn't somebody walking around the property at night checking? You know, I mean, those are things that tenants could do. When, now in Lincoln Park, in the brick building, the lights are on all day and night outside. This is a waste of electricity. There's a timer that goes on every building. Somebody's not setting them, you know? And there have been times when the back of my building, it's pitch black and there were no lights on because nobody went to change the time. So, I mean, there should be schedules according to the time changes. It's something that a responsible tenant could do. I don't see why take that burden off of the maintenance department. It's overwhelming to them. They're so short-staffed. And my suggestion is when they hire new people, there should be somebody from each trade. There should be an electrician. I know the Fairhaven Housing. They have an electrician. They have a plumber. They have a carpenter. And they have four people. So, you know what I'm saying? So these are things, and I know like on their ground service in Fairhaven, they have the prisoners come in and clean up the properties. Why can't we have something like that?
I don't think we have any prisoners here, but.
Well, Fairhaven doesn't have a prison.
I'm just joking.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Just to move along, we've got five people to interview tonight. But I'm really glad you're raising this, just, just so, you know, for edification purposes. The Situate Housing Authority is a separate authority of which you would be a member of when, if we appoint you to that. So I want to just double check and make sure that you will be comfortable with raising all this and, and talk to me a little bit about your leadership style in articulating, representing your residents, right, knowing that you are frustrated by and see a lot of these safety concerns and being a member of that board that's going to solve it because you're going to have a vote. So.
Exactly.
Talk to me a little bit about your style in working with a new board like that coming in.
A new board? Well, first of all, you have to fill out the board and you just have to see how each member works. As far as I'm concerned, there should be either a couple, like a little committee that's working on certain things. And I've always said you give the best job to the person most qualified. Mr. Gorman, I heard him say about he dealt with service and speaking to people for many years. I also have done that. I've owned my own business for, I had it for over 30 years, unfortunately. Due to health reasons, everything fell through for me. But you need people who can talk to people and talk to them not abruptly and not down to them, but at their level. You never want to treat somebody, I told this to Kathy one day. I said, you know, no one is probably, has planned on living in housing for their final years. And we need to make it as happy a place in that they feel it's their home. You know, sometimes there are little things that I've seen or been told in the past, like they weren't supposed to have flowers anymore. They were allowed a nine-inch plant at one point. I don't know, I don't know if that's still active, but that was a few years ago. I think it was before my time. But, I mean, those are harsh, you know? And, and so people, I think I used to read about it in the Boston community that they took the people out of the housing and they took them to parks and gave them a garden center because that makes people get their frustrations out and their depression out. Things like that by working within the community to help get our board members interested in that. I had mentioned a few years ago, maybe getting the Garden Club in Situate to work with each property to get year-round pieces of flowering bushes and things like that that rotate during the year because people feel so good when they see those things, you know?
They're all great ideas. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Campion?
Yeah, thank you so much. You're a kind of, your insights, it's, I remember thinking you mentioned that. I'm certain we'll follow up with it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And since Mr. Vagnani just joined us, I won't put you on the spot immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry for being late.
That's quite all right. We understand. This is a busy time of year for you, right?
Yes.
Yes. Diane Leonard?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Diane Leonard. I applied last year via Zoom. And you guys made a great choice in giving Clay the job. I miss him. Sorry he's gone and someone's here to fill his spot.
And what's your address?
27 Lincoln Park Drive.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I applied last year, you probably don't remember, but I have an associate's degree in business and accounting. I've had my own business, marketing, and I'm very good at organizing. But now that I've been there for a year and a half, I see things differently. I see how things can get improved, how people can work together. And, excuse me, I guess I'm nervous. And I ask a lot of questions, like when they did the doors, everybody was told it was nine to 12. I'm like, yeah, right. So I went over and talked to the guys who work in the contractor. He says, oh, no, we'll be there till four or five. So then I went around to the people who are really, I mean, that's a long time to have your place open when it's 30 degrees out last March and tell them, listen, you need to, you know, make plans to go somewhere, keep warm and take anything that's going to get ruined out of the room. And, you know, it went okay. It was just, no one was really notified, you know? So I'm the one that likes to ask questions. I concur with what Thomas said and what Susan said. They're both incredible people and they would serve your board well. Whoever you pick will. You know, I knew you were going to pick Clay last year. I knew it. He was a good, he was the right choice. So, anyway, what I'd like to see happen is better communication in Lincoln Park. Like when the tree fell and you couldn't get out on the driveway, nobody knew. I mean, so people getting in their cars and trying to get out and, you know, riding over cables. It was a little dangerous, but there's no communication. How do you meet, get a hold of all those 40 people? There's a few of us who've done, we text each other, learn things. You know, like one of the women made soup and brought it in. See, I didn't know. It was my first time that the community room, thank God, is open all the time and you can go charge your phone, get, you know, warm. And I didn't know there's a refrigerator space. So I missed that angle, but it was good to see other people meet together, talk about it. And I have oil lamps, so I was kind of cool. But I also like the fact that on the second day, somebody turned on the second generator and you had hot water. And that made a total difference. And, I mean, I drove over to Planet Fitness to take a shower. I mean, it's just little things you think you want and, because I knew that tree wasn't going anywhere. Because then the pole snapped and it was like, that's going to take days. Anyway, so the communication could be a little better. It's not, something happens and it's hard to, some people don't have cell phones and I know that. So you can't like say everybody's going to get on a text chain because it probably won't happen. But I also learned sitting in the rooms that... But I also learned sitting in the rooms that, you know, as Thomas said and Susan said, the residents need to be heard. They need to feel that their voices have some meaning that, you know, and this couple of women have been there over 22 years and, you know, they're like, well, this isn't big, you know, they're complaining, but the reason why they're complaining is because they're not being heard. And they've been there so long, you know, they're getting kind of like the shuffle. I've only been there a year and a half, so I'm still the rookie and I, you know, I learned a lot watching everybody and some people I've never met, some people never come out, other people do come out. Like Susan has the most amazing garden in front. I wasn't allowed to have a garden because it is the no, no water thing and then it rained all July. But when I moved in, it was COVID and so anything I said, it was Dan, it just blew me off, like, you know, it didn't matter what I said, like the underneath my kitchen stinks. But there is mold problems. I've had black mode in my place and I was actually looking at it again tonight, it's starting to come back and I actually don't know how to prevent that from happening. But if it's in my place, it can't just be in my place. So we'll, you know, I'm willing to paint, I'm willing to do it. And I think more people in the place want to get involved. They also want to make good changes and, and, you know, like for me, I'd like some bushes in front. I'll pay for them just to put them in front. Okay, so someone asked a question about the landscaping? I have no comment because that's, it would be a negative comment. But the guys don't really have time to do, you know, the mowing of the so-called lawn. Anyway, so a lot of the women there right now are putting up Christmas lights and trying to make the place look festive and happy and that's the way people want to be. They want to have pride in where they live. Like, you know, little things inside, if someone came into board and said, I want to put in, my son's a plumber, a new faucet and sink, I wouldn't say, well, anybody would say no to it. I mean, making the place better, you know, and everybody goes, whoa, we can't ask. And I'm like, oh, all right. But people are afraid to ask. They're afraid sometimes that they, as I said, they don't have their voices heard. So I, I also want to have my voice heard, but I don't want to just, where's my, I don't want to just sit on the board. I want to get involved and I want to make a difference because I'm very fortunate to live at Lincoln Park because where I was before was poor as hell. And trust me, moving into this little place, it's smaller than I've ever, it's, it's like luxurious. I walk outside every night and look at the stars. I'm very fortunate. So I want to pay back. It's, and I know everybody here does. I know Thomas and Susan do too. And I know whoever you pick is going to be the perfect one and God bless Clay. Thank you. But, okay, so here, wait, one more thing. So, and, so when he passed away, again, no communication. And he was my friend. He had just called me the day before and I found out from another woman and, so she said, oh, did you hear that the black man passed away? I'm like, what? But nobody knew him because he kept, he kept to himself a lot. He was more or less shy. But then it went around the whole place and everybody kept calling the black man. His name is Clay. But it's kind of like, you got to get outside to meet the people and maybe he was too shy. Anyway.
Well, he was shy, he wasn't shy enough that he didn't come and offer to be on the board, so I.
No, I know that.
I commend him posthumously that, that he took that step and, you know, we're all very sorry to hear about it, so.
So, yeah, I was too, really very sad. So he took the most amazing photos, by the way, of the sunsets, I mean, sunrises, sorry, at 4:00 AM every day. And I had suggested to his son when they were helping him move out, I said, well, gee, maybe we'd like to have one at Lincoln Park. So I don't know if that's even a doable idea, but it's almost. So what I'm saying is, so here's a man that I knew and he passed away, but nobody knew. There's no, nothing like, again, communication. Okay, so you probably don't need to ask me any questions, right? You got two other people. I concur with them.
Yeah. No, I was going to ask about communication, so that's.
And I don't know how to set that up because like Mary, who's been there 26 years, she's one of the oldest ones, she only has a regular phone. You know, like when Dottie Next Door, because it, okay, little things, like Dottie Next Door called me because she couldn't get a child's cat thing off. So she calls me, I go over and, you know, it's, we all work together. So I keep giving my card to everybody, saying, if you need anything, you know, the ambulance has come, who's going to the hospital, who, you know, I, it's a group. We all need to stay safe too. And I'm sorry, I'm squealing on the people that don't wear masks even though the door says, wear a mask. I play by the rules most of the time. I tell everybody, I don't want to get in trouble. So no questions, right, guys?
Any questions, anybody?
You're going to pick the right person.
We will.
You did last time and I knew Clay was it.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
And now I have Arthur Leslie, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you today?
I've lived in Situate for 15 years at Central Park.
Thank you.
Now, I just want to state, I'm not here to build a better mousetrap. I'm here to work with the board members and do what is right and be able to vote on what I think is right or what is wrong. I have my experience. I was a town meeting member for 14 years at Randolph. I'm a member, I was a service member of RCA Corporation. And I'm a good listener. When I speak to people, I speak directly to the people. And all I'm trying to do is have peace. If the board majority goes this way, I might not have any objection to it or I might say something about it. But basically, I'm not trying to change the way things are done because I know that they're done as well as could be done. I'm a calm person and as I said, I'm a good listener. Before, what I would like to do, if I see some infraction of someone doing something or two people arguing, I would say, okay, let's talk about this. Let, let's have this over now. And we then can go on to something new and something better. Situate is my home now. I lived here, as I said, for 14 years and I enjoy the interaction with people. And being a member of the tenants' board representation, I would work hard to make a difference. And I just hope that you take that all the way I mean it and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the board?
No, I guess, just a little bit, what do you think, I mean, is there anything that's going on right now that you think is on the forefront of the board that should address?
I didn't hear the question.
Sure. Is there any issue right now that you think should be addressed by the board?
There are always issues, everywhere there are issues. And they get straightened out at the proper time. I have, I feel that Kathy Damash does a fabulous job in what she does. And I've worked with her in the past and I look forward to working with her in the future. But as far as, yeah, there's problems, there's problems everywhere. A window doesn't open, a door's stuck, someone can't get out of the elevator. I mean, all these things come up. And it was just me to work with the board to try to conquer every problem that we have and, and vote in the way that I deem it necessary.
Thank you.
Ms. Campion?
I think you pretty much addressed this, but the question of, you know, using your judgment at the board is one thing, the other is when you're walking down the hall and you're like, hey, I have a colleague who's been in that lady's board for, you know,
I was a medic in the US Army.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I was a medic in the US Army. I was a, excuse me. And a town meeting member of Randolph. And also I worked 25 years for RCA when they were sent in, in Weymouth, Massachusetts. I worked for them for 25 years and became manager of the unit. And now I'm old enough, I want something to do. I mean, watching TV in the daytime is not what I do. And I would do the best I could possibly do, anyone could ask.
I appreciate that. And I, I knew looking at the list, I mean, one more candidate, that, that, you know, we're, we're in a fortunate position that we have all these wonderful people that can be doing something for the board, so thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Herbert Osborne. Thank you for coming in and if you could.
Certainly a pleasure to be here, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Herb Osborne. I've been in this community since 9/11, moving here from New York. By way of background, my business experience is in the finance world. I was a vice president of a major international bank at once upon a time. Moving up here, I became involved in the building and construction industry and became a licensed contractor in the state of Massachusetts. When physically I couldn't do that anymore, I became involved in, in energy management and energy evaluation of new residential construction in the state. I'm known as what's known as a HERS raider and that's part of, required, I required part of the building code for new construction, that every house is evaluated in that respect. By way of other experience and perhaps related to this particular potential assignment, I've been a member of the board of directors of a not-for-profit hospital in Brooklyn some years ago. And briefly up here, I was on the board and was treasurer of the South Shore Habitat for Humanity. That was an interim, fill in the, fill in the blank kind of an assignment, but it was very interesting, of course. Addressing some of the questions that were asked of the others as we're going through that, I'm trying to accelerate the process because.
We appreciate it.
Dragging on a bit. I think the primary goal, the primary reason I want to be involved is because I was so rewarded when I was on the board of both of those other institutions. It was such a rewarding experience to be able to give something back and not have, as it were, any skin in the game. I didn't have to be there. It was clearly and totally voluntary and it was something I really relished in terms of the, of the sense of accomplishment that that provided for me. I would think the same would be true of this kind of an assignment. I think that the challenge that one has in a small, smaller organization at the board level, especially one that involves heavily skewed toward tenant interests, in my particular case, is want to balance. There's always too few dollars chasing too many applications. There's no question about that. Cash flow is a big deal and it's evident in certain parts of the physical plan of the three, the three locations. But the prioritization of where those monies go to is one thing. The other thing is making the community aware that you can't be all things to all people and that the balance, there's a need for balance on both sides of the equation. The toughest part of the communication problem is that you can't fix everything. And you can't fix everything tomorrow afternoon. It just doesn't work that way. And that's the real world and that's what we have to deal with here. I prefer, I prefer a collegial environment within a board context. I don't ever want to be sort of identified as the rebel without a cause. It only creates dissension and distrust and, and conflict and that's not what we need here, especially when we're dealing in an environment that is economically challenging, I think. My primary concern with respect to the properties would be, I think principally focused on the deferred maintenance issues that are evident everywhere. And I think that at least some sort of a plan to begin to address them, not to satisfy them perhaps altogether, but to prioritize what gets done and when, maybe that exists today, I have no idea. I mean, obviously when one joins a board, you have to find out what's there and I don't know. So that's, that would be my first big question, to inform myself in as reasonably sensible ways I could.
Thank you. Excellent essay.
That was very student and, yeah, thank you.
Questions? Oh, go ahead, Chair.
Just one quick question. I think you said it, but I missed it. How long have you been at, you're at Wheeler Park? How long have you been?
I've been there six years now.
Six years?
Yeah.
You've been there six. It's, you know, that whole Yankee thing.
Pardon me?
That whole Yankee Red Sox thing.
Well, I'll tell you something. The first question I got when I moved up here is, what do you think about the Patriots? And my answer was the good one because my game, my thing is I've always followed Belichick. I don't care where he goes, that's who I'm rooting for because he's terrific, I think. And he's here with us now, so that's good.
That's last night.
All good.
Thank you. I think your perspective is, is spot on and you have a good sense of, of, you know, the challenges of the job, so I appreciate you raising your hand.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With apologies to everyone who's waiting for the 7:40 agenda item, as you can tell, we had an enthusiastic group of people applying for a very important job in our community and we thank you all for coming in. We will probably vote later. So, thank you again. Next up is to discuss vote wind turbine curtailment. Jim Boudreau, Town Administrator. I think most people here who are here for this know that the select board voted to curtail the operation of the wind turbine in, last spring. And we started the curtailment in April and we went until October. We've had a number of people ask us, will we consider, would we consider curtailing it for the whole year or at least maybe adding a month or two on either side? So that's what we're here to talk about. And Jim, if you wanted to.
I don't really have a whole lot to add. You summarized it pretty well. Turbine was shut down for the summer and the residents have requested now to continue that 11 to 6, 11 PM to 6 AM shutdown on a year-round basis.
Well, I just, excuse me, we will talk first and then we will ask for input. That's our habit. That's how we do it. And we do have Mr. Darty remotely on conference call. He's ill. Mr. Darty, can you hear us?
Mr. Darty? Hello? Are we on mute? That's what I was just. Mr. Darty? Can you hear us on the speakerphone? Okay, hold on, let me put it back on speaker. Okay, I'm just checking again, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. As I was saying, Mr. Darty is ill and.
Put this on mute so we can hear you better.
Great, thank you. So we made an accommodation for him so that he could participate in the hearing. I will say that we had projected that to shut down the turbine during those months that we discussed, we projected it was going to cost around $90,000 to the town. And in fact, that's pretty much where it came at. So I just want people to know that, that was a pretty good projection. Does anyone on the board want to comment on, again, we're talking about curtailment tonight, that's what we're talking about.
I have a couple of questions about the numbers because they weren't really making sense to me last night. I think we asked for accurate numbers what the cost was, right?
Yes.
So in the backup that we have, it says based on a six-year average, the turbine typically produced blah, blah, blah kilowatt hours. So are the numbers that we have before us our actual costs? So, are the numbers that we have before us our actual costs of the shutdown in the past six months, or are they based on averages?
I'll give you the actual cost of the shutdown.
So, the $91,000 is the actual cost? Okay. Thank you. I was confused by his six-year average comment.
And then, I did send a letter that...
You have to have a base, what you would normally produce and what we ended up producing, and that's like the delta. So, he used the six-year average to determine, this is the average amount of power we produced in that same period. This is what we produced with the shutdown. This is the delta, and this is what the cost of the delta is. Because you have to have the baseline in order to figure out what, how much power you didn't produce.
Do we have any idea or numbers of how much money Citroen Wind LLC made during the six months? Do we have any idea how much they made over the last 10 years? Does anyone know?
I wouldn't have those numbers. I wouldn't even know where to get them unless they're a publicly traded company or...
How is that relevant?
I'm curious. We're talking about taxpayer dollars. We have a contract with a private vendor, and I'm curious to see how, how that contract is faring comparable to our taxpayer. So, I'm trying to see if it's an even match. I doubt this is true, but are they making $100 million? Are they making no money? Is it a million? I'm just curious to see where, how the company is doing that we're dealing with. Just curious.
I have another numbers question.
Sure.
Did you have another one?
No, well, not numbers. I have, I'll let you go.
Again, you know, maybe I'm soft, so I'm just not understanding this spreadsheet. So, if we, the town netted $87,000, and then we had to pay 3,000, like, how do we get to 91? That math is just not driving for me. On...
Backup 29.
Yeah, thank you. Page 29 in the backup. It's the wind turbine curtailment cost of summer 2021 chart. Can you just walk through that with me?
So, you get a rebate, and then what we had to pay them for the power that we didn't, they didn't produce, because we have to make that. And then the shutdown at night, what the town would net, and what the town netted previously. And so, for June, six-month average, the town would net $19,727. For June with the shutdown, the town netted $6,400, basically. So, the delta is $13,000. That's what we didn't make in the month of June. And then the 91 is the total of all those months added across the bottom.
So, during that period, we usually make $87,000, and during this period, we lost $4,000.
Right. So, yeah, those two together, you...
I do have another numbers question, though. So, with our, if we add our solar numbers and our wind, I mean, our estimated solar profits from our press release is that we would, as a town, receive $500,000 annually. So, if this wind, sorry, this is from Green Communities Department of Energy, Department of Energy, is that where we are? There's a promise that was made to the town 10 years ago, that the town would benefit about a half million dollars a year. I'm trying to see a decade later if that promise has been fulfilled. Are we now, are we benefiting about a half million a year?
From solar, right?
From both. From both together. So, I'm saying if half the curtailment, that's 300,000, our green energy, which is, we should still be plus 200,000 as a town, correct? Is that about where we are?
That's simple math, though.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to give me some time to get those numbers together, and I don't have those.
I think in general, though, we make about 250 grand on both, both sources.
Yeah.
So, I think that's accurate.
We're still about, so we'll still be in the net, we'll still be in the black for green energy if we curtail. Okay, there's one recommendation.
Yeah, without, I mean, I didn't look up the solar numbers, so I don't have those anywhere close to being in front of me.
I mean, I was an advocate for curtailing this year-round before. I know some people might be, might be concerned at the 304,000. I would say it's almost like a Christmas miracle, but in about 20 minutes, we're going to talk about a surplus auction that's $308,000 for a property that was foreclosed, which gets us right there, so at least for this year, on a financial end, I'm less concerned. And I guess I would say this, is that, I don't even want to talk about the studies necessarily, because I think we treat this one company differently than any other company. I've heard from Madam Chair that Roeth's Marine could be loud at night. I don't need a study. I trust you.
I said that.
Isn't it loud over, oh, no, I'm sorry, are Kennedys, are Kennedys over there? There's other places that it's loud? I'm sorry if that was not...
No, I never...
There's other places.
That was me.
That Kennedys Garden can be loud, or near my house, if the Toll Brothers are doing construction, it's loud. I trust all of you folks telling me that some of those places are there. And I trust the 40 people or so who email who tell me that it's loud. We don't let Kennedys do it. We have, we don't let any other company in town stay up late at night waking people up. And I trust the 40-plus people who are doing it for eight years. And I just want to let them get some sleep. And at least for this year, I know we can get the money.
Ms. Cantfield.
Yeah, so, I'll make a, your Kennedys analogy is completely out of line, because Kennedys is not allowed to do it. That's not part of their purview in terms of what that property can be used for. Whether it's loud or not loud is irrelevant in that argument. And the town didn't vote to put Kennedys there to generate revenue. So, the town voted to put a windmill where they put it to generate green energy and green revenue to power all of the buildings in the town. So, there's a big difference between your, your two examples there. So, so, we've been dealing with this for a long time. I've been here for a lot of it. And we've, initially, when we started, we said, okay, there are times of year when it is bad for the 40 people. There's many more that live back in that general vicinity, and there's, you know, there's probably a dozen people that are constant complainers, and it probably expands up to 40. I've been up there many, many nights. Can't hear it sometimes. Sometimes I hear a little bit. But that's irrelevant. I don't live there, right? I do not live there. I do talk to a lot of people that live up there. I know a lot of people that live up there. But that's irrelevant. We've said, okay, during this time period where people like to have their windows open, and it's more likely to be heard, that it's, that it could be shut down. And that's what we did way, well before, I don't know when we did that the first time, well before this board decided to expand it to all directions, which I still don't understand. But that seems reasonable. You know, the request was really never for winter until now, because winter wasn't a problem. People have their windows closed, the wind is blowing more in the winter, and it has not been a problem. So, what's happening now is we've shut it off during this period, and this group of people want to take, they want it torn down. They don't want it, you know, they want, they're, they want it done, and right now, we're just not able to do that. You know, the lease is going to be up in, what is it, five, six, seven years or something?
Four years.
Four years. You know, and then the town's going to have to reassess it and say, okay, do we want to extend the lease? But until then, if we're going to go more than what we've done here, which is, and don't, I mean, just numbers, we cost the town $100,000 by making this decision, I think it's got to go before the town to decide much more than that. And if the town wants to vote to shut it down, then the town can vote to shut it down. But in terms of what we can do, for us to go back, there was a lot of studies put into this, and whether it was put in the right place or the wrong place, you know, I can't really debate that. But the town voted for it many times to get approved, and if we want to shut it down, then we have to go before the town, I believe, to say, okay, do you want to shut it down? Otherwise, whether we have money coming in from other source or another coming in from others is irrelevant. This is something the town voted for to generate revenue, an X amount of revenue, which it's been doing, and that's what we have to do as our fiduciary responsibility to the town. And I have no problem going to town meeting and saying, do you want to shut this thing off at the cost of $300,000 a year? And if they vote yes, just like they voted yes for the land, and just like they vote yes for other things, then we shut it off.
Madam Chair, the town voted to open up a dump and get revenue from that. The town doesn't, they didn't vote necessarily for which hours. There have been votes, there have been elections for us to take some of these votes that are there. We're not tearing the thing down. We're setting certain hours for when it's operational. Yes, I understand, it's $300,000. But if we decided tonight to let TK's open up till 3:00 a.m., that's revenue that's there. We can make those decisions. Same with Kennedy and other places. Say, we could let the dump stay open all night if we wanted to. People voted for the dump to be there, but they're going to complain about the hours and the revenue that's lost that's there. The $300,000, I can understand why you may want to bring that in front of the voters, but the voters also elected us to make some of these decisions today or when we need to, to make that happen. We've already made other decisions of hundreds of thousands of dollars. $300,000, people want to have and bring it back and say, no, we're wrong. They can do that as well, say, no, we want it 24/7.
I don't think you're right there. We do not have the ability to do that. We do not have the financial ability to change things of that dramatic nature. We vote for $100,000 this or that because it's before us and it goes before the town, and it's part of a budget that's already been approved. We do not have the ability to just say, you know what, we're not going to, we're not going to take this revenue stream anywhere, or, you know what, we're going to spend $300,000 on this because we want it. We can't do that. That's not in our purview. Everything's got to be approved by town meeting.
I understand. So, then, so if you're telling me that right now, you, that everyone else on here thinks that, well, I don't know why we brought this up in front of the board, then, if you think that we can't curtail the hours of a business that is working in town? I understand we have a contract, so why are we even having this discussion?
As citizens asked us to, and it was my decision to put it on the agenda, because the citizens asked us to, and I think they deserve a robust discussion about the pros and cons and what we believe our responsibility is. And we not only have a responsibility to, to be fiscally prudent, we also have an obligation to be legally prudent, and I, for one, am concerned about the possibility of lawsuits, and I think we should be concerned about that. And I understand when you say $300,000 is not that big of a deal, but it is on an ongoing basis, so we'd be looking at, you know, 1 point, I don't know, 1 million or whatever over the next three years. And I, for one, think we reach, really need to look at the contract going forward to see what, if anything, we should do about it, and so, and I hear all sides of this story. I understand it. But I'm not going to tell anyone what my opinion is right now, because that's not my job, but...
There it is.
Well, not at this moment. I think there needs to be other people heard from. We haven't heard from, you know, our citizens here. So, Ms. Cantfield, have you something to say?
Just a couple of observations, Madam Chair. I don't think there's anybody on this board that does not feel empathy for those who are negatively impacted by this, that we wouldn't be having this conversation if that weren't the case. I think Mr. Goodrich's point is well-made, other than, I think Mr. Vignani pointed out is, we have an existing contract in place, and Mr. Goodrich acknowledged this, that requires us to perform, just like any other contract, to certain agreements. And at some point, there's a tipping point, and we could spend all night talking about that, where if we were to exercise additional curtailment, we would be undoubtedly in a conversation about breach of contract. So, that's sort of illegal, as you pointed out, a legal issue that is sort of another level. The other issue, the other observation, is the whole point about the studies and what we've concluded, and are they in compliance? So, as I've said many times over many years, our board must comply with noise, nuisance complaints, noise levels, noise bylaws, DEP regulations. We have conducted many studies that have not disproved that that's the case, which means our economic flexibility is limited, because, yes, it does affect some people, but it doesn't rise to the level of noncompliance. And we can, you know, we can have, that's, that's a separate conversation. But to this point, the board has been satisfied that there has been compliance. So, you add all those things up, and we have to balance the concerns we have about residents with our limitations of remedy. I think that the curtailment that we have done to date, which is all night, all summer, addresses by far the majority of those times when it impacts residents. Does it address all of the concerns? No, it doesn't. And those are the things on the margin that I would love to address, and I'm not certain that it's all through curtailment, but that's, that obviously is another bigger conversation. You know, we have, I don't know, 40 pages of backup of all of this information in our backup, which, you know, obviously is available for everybody to look at, but I think everyone in this room has seen everything. It's a conundrum. There's no question. So, I think, as I think you started the conversation, the question we have before us is, we, we did this curtailment this summer. One, does the board think that that was useful and should continue? Because, I mean, we never had an intention it was a pilot, but I think affirmation of that would be important. And then the second question is, should additional curtailment be desirable? Does the board support that, and to what extent? Like, those are the two questions we, I think, we have before us. Is that a good summary?
Yes, thank you.
But, you know, obviously, I'm sure the residents have some questions.
Well, I will get to that. Give me time.
I will, absolutely, Madam.
Mrs. Karin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just, you know, no, I don't have anything additional to add. I'm curious about this other consideration. Actually, I have a, another question for Jim. With forfeiting the protection of the turbine under production, so, when that happens, what is, you know, what does that cost look like in the past?
I'm not sure if I hit that. I'd have to go back and go through all the history, but the under production is they are required to produce a certain amount of energy for the town.
Right.
If they don't, they have to make us whole on the energy that we have to buy, so...
But obviously, if we're going to turn it down additionally, it really impacts probably the ability to hit that.
It could, and not to complicate this even further, the shutdown is a voluntary agreement between the town and Citroen Wind. So, they could say, no, they're not going to shut it down anymore. But without looking at when the actual underperformance occurred, because it would depend on what you were then paying for energy at the time, blah, 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 I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay.
Do you know an answer if they, if they...
Okay, I just didn't know if we had an number.
But you forfeit that right by asking them to curtail.
Even though they, it's a voluntary agreement, on behalf of both parties?
We've asked them not to produce power.
Right.
So, we can't hold them to a production level if we're telling them that they can't operate within certain hours.
Right, yeah, okay.
So, we forfeit the right to say, you didn't give us enough power, you have to make us whole. Because their response is going to be, well, you made us shut it off. If we didn't have to shut it off, we would have made, we would have made money off.
All right. So, we will go to our audience, our, the people who are here, and if people wouldn't mind, if we could start with Mr. ... And if people wouldn't mind if we could start with Mr.?
Did we lose him again?
Yeah. Still there? I know. I was saying it, and I was interrupted. We will start with Mr. Darty, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I listened with great interest to what the members of board were saying. The one thing that seemed to be annoying me is that a wrong way of thinking. They should have taken about money here rather than public health. Money's nice, but not to hurting people. So the money aspect of it should be secondary. Now, Mr. Bagnetti said, and he said this many times before, that the town voted for this. And without them voting to shut it down, he doesn't feel, he has that power. However, the town was voted for, they didn't have the proper information about what this thing is going to do and the loudness of it, and how it's going to affect people from a mental health or from a physical point of view, from general health. They voted in ignorance. We all did. We all thought it was a great thing. And it is a great thing, except you're hurting people. They also voted for you, the selectman. And your job is to protect the people of this community. And you have information that these people don't have and a majority of the people in town don't have. And most of the people in town don't share in all of that. All they see is money. Your job is to protect this community when something fails or to make decisions that have to be made. And this is one of the things you have to make without having a town meeting. You're aware of data and information that most people don't know about. You read all the emails, you research this whole thing. I bet you if you went out in the street and you talked to anybody in this community, one out of 10 knows, very minority group, wouldn't know what the hell you're talking about. And you ask them about the specifics of that new turbine, they wouldn't have the foggy. All I know is to make money and look pretty. So I think you should act on your own. You shouldn't worry about money. That's secondary. Make your decision about what's best for the community and what's best for the people of the town. And then discuss what you're going to do about the money aspect of it. This is windfall money from the beginning. Nothing that was supposed to be generated, something we've got to get out. The people in this community, everybody has a value. Every particular life has a value. Trust me. I know that firsthand, how important life is, how precious it is. As you know my position right now medically. So I implore you to look at this from a health point of view and take your power that you have, which is given to you by the people because they knew that you were supposed to do things like this, and who have not had any knowledge. And go ahead and do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Darty. Anyone here which to chime in, I'm sure?
Hi.
Hi.
Alice Karlberg, 26 Hughes Road.
Thank you, Alice.
I just want to tell you first, the good things. It was delightful over the summer to be able to go to bed at night and listen to the machine, the woof, woof, woof. I'm an early riser, but, you know, after 6 o'clock and 6:30, all of a sudden, you start hearing it. And it really made me appreciate having a good, sound night's sleep. That being said, this morning at 5:15, or was it yesterday morning at 5:15, blowing southwest, west-southwest, and loud as could be. I mean, so it isn't just a summertime kind of a deal. It is something that can interrupt your night's sleep over and over and over again on your mind. I would love to see the thing shut down at nighttime, full-time. I mean, believe me, I can sit there too and watch the speed of the turbine changes. And you know, when they're putting the power in, and if you look at the power dash, you'll see how much power they are putting into it, that it's spinning faster. And they can make up the time they're losing over the nighttime during the day when they're pushing that thing, when it's going around, one, two, one, two, one, two, versus one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, one, two, you know. I mean, I know it sounds dumb, but I've spent a lot of time looking and, you know, on the non-paper side of listening to this and figuring out what really is going on with the non-data operated kind of a thing. And it's there, you know, but it takes time. I mean, stupid me, one time, I wanted to just see the thing turn. You know, it was stopped. It was stopped to pivot into the upward position. And I was walking the dogs down, and I'm going, "Oh, wow." I went down through the golf course, and I'm going, "Oh, it's turning," you know. I mean, they're dumb little things, but I get into that kind of stuff. But a good night's sleep is extremely important to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Mark McKeever, 151, great point.
Thank you.
I've slept a total of four and a half hours in the last three nights because of this thing is spinning. And I think as a taxpaying citizen of this community, I should be able to call somebody and tell them, "This is a nuisance, and this is waking me up. My wife doesn't sleep." I've slept four and a half hours in three nights. That's not, that's not good. And Mr. Vignani, you say you attended the thing, and it spins, and it's okay? Yes, there are times that it spins and it's okay. But in the middle of the night, and I get woke, and I can't fall back asleep. Four and a half hours in three nights. That's wrong. That's wrong. On top of the fact that I come home from work, and the flicker's there, and it's, I can't escape it. I know we had discussed and talked about, you know, you guys are going to do some curtailment with the flicker? Crickets. I'm just, I, like, I'm, I'm going to go home tonight and probably try to sleep. And if I get two hours of sleep tonight, I'm going to be so excited to go to work on two hours of sleep. And it's, it's starting to wear on me. And it's starting to wear on me in a not very good way. And please, I don't know what else to do. You got, we got to do something about this stupid thing. It's got to be stopped. It has to be stopped. I'm done.
Do you have a question?
Of course.
Jim, what did we decide about the flicker? Because I know that was a second component of this.
You didn't make a decision on the flicker. You just felt to shut it down at night.
Okay. I was just curious what the remedy was there.
Well, if I may interject, Ms. Cantfield and Mr. Vignani, apparently, were trying to work with you, Mr. McKeever. And I think somehow or other...
Yeah, they did, and I appreciate it. It was a rainstorm. Mr. Vignani was supposed to come. And shortly thereafter, he reached back out to us, and we were, we had gone out for the day. But after that, there was, I would say, limited, there was no communication after that. And again, it's, I'm not pointing fingers. You know, we tried. I, I don't know where it stands, and I'm not going to...
Well, I just wanted to make clear for the record that they did try to reach out with you. And for whatever reason...
Well, if they reached out, and I was a school teacher, and I would have given grades, they wouldn't be on the honor roll, let's put it that way.
Did I make a quick comment?
Yes, your name.
I reached out to the McKeivers many times. And the last time that we finally spoke, you told me to stop trying to contact you. And anything I wanted to say, I should say in writing.
Correct.
That's what you said. So I said, "Let's come over and talk about things. Let's look at what's going on."
Correct.
And you said, "You did not want me to come over. You did not want to talk about it. Anything you wanted, I could put in an email, and that's all you wanted." So honor roll or whatever, that's what it was. That's the fact.
Again, Tony.
Yeah, and I feel, Mark, I feel bad for you. You're in a tough situation. I get it. And I'm trying, I went over there many times to try and say, "What can we do?" And you just weren't interested.
I'm very interested, Tony, because it, there's a lot that goes on in my family. The family dynamics that I live at is not very good, okay? And you and your board members, and I appreciate that you guys are trying, but to come and to say, "Oh, you feel bad," and... Are you kidding me? Like, really? Really? And it's difficult. And four hours, and Nancy doing, working on four hours of sleep, Tony, in your job?
Yep.
For three nights, four hours. And you're going to try to perform at a high level? It's, something's got to be done, you guys. Like, something has to be done major to stop this. And, you know, whether or not you tried to reach out, well, let's try it again, then, see if we can come together. And maybe I'll have five hours of sleep the day that you come. And I wouldn't be as hot-headed as I am right now. Because I'm a little bit sour. I'm not going to lie to you. I'm irritated. I'm irritated. Four hours of sleep in three days? That's not, that's not productive, and that's not healthy. And anybody on the board or anybody, you know, reading a magazine would say that's okay. No, it's not okay. It's not.
Well, I will reach out to you again.
I'm looking, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Cantfield, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge, so not that long ago, you did send an email to the board, and you asked for a consideration of removing of the flicker and to have a review of the peer review, I think was the summary, the fair summary
Correct.
of the email. I don't, I don't know if you got any response to that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And we have, you know, we, this board has talked about the flicker for a while. So I think when, when we have, Tony, if you want to take the lead in the follow-up, the question is, you know, we have costs, I mean, we, it's a cost to the town, and we're willing to have that conversation. So we have estimates of what it would cost to eliminate the, as much as possible eliminate the flicker based on, I mean, we've been told it's not a hard calculation. So we know what that's going to cost. And I think what we need to have the conversation, and I think it's probably better to have one-on-one rather than take the whole board's time, is there's an annual cost for that. And is that, is that what is going to, you know, be satisfactory to your family? So if, Tony, you can take that, I mean, we got that in the, this is the number.
Yeah, well, we were looking, I mean, from the numbers that we have, flicker is very seasonal, right? The sun has to be in a certain, you know, it's like...
To the fall.
I don't remember. It's like 40...
Turn back until we try to block.
Right, so it's like 40 hours a year, I think, is when they said the flicker is direct, could hit your property.
That's, I think Mr. Bagnetti came up with that number.
No, I think the, I think the, well, Epsilon did.
This is from Cituate Wind.
Every day at sunset.
It's a little bit...
I have every day at sunset. I have photos of it from today.
All right. I would like to...
I'll go over it with you, I want to have the...
If we could, flicker is not going to happen at 11 o'clock at night.
Right. October to February during the daytime.
If we could, we could have that discussion with Mr. McKeever after, because what we're talking about is a potential curtailment at night during the winter. That's what we're talking about. So I don't want to get so far off that we can't...
And that was my question. So is it safe to say, and I appreciate Mr. Darty's comments, that we could probably find, find the money or think about the money secondarily? And I know that gives you chills. I know it gives Jim and Nancy chills. But at the end of the day, and Tony and I were talking about this last night, probably not, he's going to, I'm going to mince his words and use them for another discussion. But the growth in this town is, is higher than I think any of us ever anticipated, you know, when this windmill was built. So we have revenue coming in that probably we didn't really anticipate hitting us. And I think we can find the $180,000, I don't know if we just multiply it by two. Is it $200,000 to shut off at night? I think we can find that, especially this year, when we go through our budget review in maybe five or 10 minutes. So in my opinion, if our charge tonight is to vote whether to curtail between the same evening hours all year round, then I am ready to put that motion on the table. Because I don't want to be, I, we've listened to this. We've, with all due respect, not only just listened, but have been significantly harassed for months. So I think we all get it, you know, and we all understand and are listening. And I would like to take an action if we can, is what I would propose.
I agree. I just have another numbers question. That's okay. It appeared that the numbers we got from Mr. Banger was from, I think at the bottom, it said September 28th. So I don't know how recent those are. And I believe our contract, it's for 3 million kilowatt-hours. That's what our, that's what we need to be able to produce. And if we're looking at the numbers now, we have now all the October numbers and all of the November numbers. And apparently, it's been a pretty windy December. It looks like we're at about 2.7 million. So I'm curious if the contract for the 91 that we're missing, do we pay that? I'm just curious, do we pay that monthly? Or at the end of the year, does that come up? Because if we...
Quarterly.
Is it, it's all just quarterly?
We get, we get paid monthly.
So if we hit our cap of 3 million, we still are going to be paying, even though... Because it looks like we might be able to hit the 3 million kilowatt for the year, since he's, A, missing two months.
Surplus. Surplus goes above the contract.
What is that? All they have to do is pay a minimum. There's no surplus. So...
Right.
The surplus comes back to us, right?
No.
I'm not sure what surplus you're talking about.
No. They're just guaranteeing up to a number, whether they hit it or not. Any surplus is still split the way it's any other donor split.
Okay.
You don't get everything above the top.
No.
Right, I understand that. But I mean, if we hit, if we hit that, if we hit the number on a yearly basis, we have to hit it on a monthly basis, not a yearly basis.
No, it's annual, I believe.
Calendar year?
Well, I mean...
May I say something?
Yes, sir. Jim's good answering, I think.
I don't like the use of the word "we're paying." I think the word is "we're not burning."
Well, we have penalties. No, we're paying.
We ended up paying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
We're paying.
It's not...
No, we are paying.
In other words, it's actually a negative cash flow rather than just saying that instead of paying $250,000, you're only getting $100,000? That's my point.
Yeah, negative cash flow is not the right term.
It's...
Well, we're paying what is essentially a penalty to Situate Wind LLC because we, they're not allowed to use the wind turbine to generate wind revenue, energy during those hours, right? And we, when we did the agreement with Situate Wind, they calculated, and we looked at the calculations to say, "All right, well, this is what we think we're going to lose in terms of energy production and the subsequent revenues." And there's some other stuff in there that's a little arcane in terms of energy certificates. But essentially, I had a hard time looking at that chart too, but I kind of kept working my way through it. And essentially, we're paying or not making the $90,000.
Right. And when you're talking about, I don't want to get too much into budget, but this is its own separate fund. So when you start talking about a piece of property that we're going to sell, that's general fund revenue. That's a whole different bucket. We don't mix those buckets.
No, I certainly understand that, but it's also a line on our financial forecast. So, and when one line goes down, we adjust another line. I mean, I've been in those financial forecasting meetings many times. I understand. Like any...
Yes, sir? You have something?
No, I, so here's what I would say. Before we make any motion, and I don't know what the, what more mitigation we want to do, if the board wants or not. One, I'd like to get an opinion from legal counsel whether we can, whether we can actually do this. Because last time we spoke to them, we felt comfortable going up to a number around $80,000 or $90,000. And now if it's going to go up to $200,000 or something thousand dollars, whether we can actually do that, or it has to go before town meeting. And I would like to ask us to put it on town meeting. We got an annual town meeting coming up in April. Put it before the town and let them vote on whether this thing should be shut down or not.
In total, or just even...
Or mitigate, whatever level of mitigation we want to do. It's, you know, until then, I, I don't have a problem doing, you know, potentially some sort of additional mitigation that we find is in the boundaries of what we can do under whatever our jurisdiction is. And then let the, you know, we've... And then, let the, you know, we've mitigated this, right? That, that's what, that's what the recourse is for, if there was a violation, which there hasn't been identified a violation. There's court action that you can take, we've gone through the course of mitigating.
Right, absolutely.
So, we've mitigated, we've mitigated what they requested. They requested it summer, we mitigated in the summer. They requested further, we mitigated further in the summer. Now they want, now they wanna mitigate it in the winter also, which, I don't live there, I don't know. You know, I've been up there, I listen, but I don't, I don't hear it every night. We'll, we'll call you in a second. So, if we wanna do more mitigation, let's figure out what it is, let's see if the wind company will actually let us do it, because they do not have to, and the last time we went to them, they weren't, they weren't like, oh yeah, this is great, I'll keep doing whatever you want. They have requirements that they have to meet. Eventually, it's gonna hit, it's gonna hit a level of whether you can or you can't do it, from a number of different sources. You know, whether the jurisdiction, whether the wind company allows us to do it, and ultimately whether the town wants to do it. And if they all wanna do that, then I'm for it. I don't like seeing the McKevers upset, you know, or, or Mr. Darty, I mean, I talk to him all the ti- you know, a number of times. I, you know, I don't, no one gets off on this. Right, we're not trying to punish anybody, we're just trying to do what we're supposed to do.
Agreed.
So, if we do all those things, and they say we can do it, and the wind company says we can do it, then let's look at mitigating it some more. Let's do it smartly, though, right? Let's not turn the thing off when it's blown in a direction that people don't hear it.
Yes, your name and address?
Ellen Hatchell, 128 Little Road.
Thank you.
Uh, well, to clarify that, we have never just asked for summer shutdown. We want it shut down at night all the time. We want it shut down, period. There's flicker problems, there's noise problems, it's not just one thing. And when we asked to come back here, it wasn't just to shut it off in the wintertime. We asked for you to look at the flicker. We've asked you to have Rob Rand be able to come in and share his peer review, because he's using, you know, you've spent all this money to do this testing. He uses Epsilon's own test results to show that the thing's non-compliant. We all know it's non-compliant. I mean, you, you know, everyone's done their little, you know, wheeling dealing to get, you know, the right compliance numbers and everything. Sure, you can say it's compliant, but we know it's not. People don't complain like this, people don't have issues like this if it's compliant. The flicker, Mark was told, he was reassured that the town would take care of this for him. And they have been suffering for years with this. And he has asked for you to email him, and you haven't. You keep saying, I'm reaching out, he doesn't wanna talk to you, he doesn't want you to come to his-
Let's not get, let's not get personal, please.
You have no idea, you don't know what the conversation was.
Really?
No, no, I mean, he's asking for written information, that's all. And if, if you're willing to do that, that's what he's asking for. Though, you know, the coming and talking and chatting is, he wants written information, and that, you're not supplying that. So I think that to say, keep saying that, I keep reaching out, you're not giving him what he's asking for. So that's what I understand, from what he's saying. And to have someone get to this level of discomfort, have a heart attack, have his family, have all these medical issues, and just have to keep coming back like this, you know, and to keep hearing, well, other people aren't bothered, or, we have to go ask if it's okay for us to do this, we have to ask the company. And with us suffering through this, it's just madman. I mean, you think we're harassing you? We're being harassed daily by this thing, and by this, what we feel is just disregard. I, I understand that you did mitigate this, and you gave us this summer from like 11 o'clock at night. Some people might wanna go to bed earlier than that. But, in light of all these years and complaints, and the fact that our Board of Health, you know, can't even see science, you know, scientific facts, they just throw them out the window and say, oh, that's fine. It's very, very, and you, you don't understand that, because you don't live there. And you don't go through this, and you don't come to these meetings, and have, you know, we're having a meeting about mitigating this, and, you know, everything should be all set. You should have those numbers that they're asking for, I don't know what those numbers are. You should've already asked legal. Why are now we gotta go to legal? I mean, you've been dealing with this since day one.
We have gone to legal.
Yeah, but you're, you're asking now, well, I think we should-
We know the answer. We went to legal, and they told us. They told us that we can-
All right, so why are you saying, let's push it off?
Because I'm, I'm, I'm going back and saying, let's ask them again, on your behalf. We asked them, we said, what can we do? What's within our purview of being able to do this? And we said, we wanna do something around this $80,000 number, and they said, okay, I believe that that's okay.
If, if, if people have been complaining about it, and it's bothering people, you had every right regardless of what your contract says, and you know that. You know, you're, sure, he'll come back and he'll do something, but the fact is, it's a public health nuisance, it's been bothering us, we have people that have been ill for years, and you have the right and responsibility, you could shut it down. You're just afraid to because of the other consequences. It doesn't mean you can't. I mean-
I mean, look, the board-
It's a public health nuisance, and it has been for us.
The board could order it shut down. It will be in court, and we'll lose, because the contract has specific parameters-
If you-
Can I speak, please? May I speak, please? The contract has specific parameters that allows us to shut it down. You seem to think that we have some stake in this, that we cooked the numbers for Epsilon to keep the windmill going. If it came back in non-compliance, it was non-compliant. That was fine, because that sends us down a different road. There's, there's no angle for the town to keep this running, there's just not. But there's legal and monetary consequences if the town just says, we're gonna shut it down. Shut it down. It's just, that's a fact.
By its permit, though, its zoning permit, it's supposed to comply. It didn't comply. It did not comply at the McKevers. The Epsilon, Epsilon's own results show that it did not comply-
And one out of 12.
That doesn't matter, it did not-
It does matter.
It doesn't matter.
We, we can have this argument back and forth all you want. It does matter, and we would end up in court, and the town would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we would lose. Because I don't have the, I'm not an acoustical engineer, I can't go in and say, this study that we did is wrong, you have to shut it down.
We have an acoustic engineer that you won't allow to-
But he's not the town's engineer. The town has done a report that says it's in compliance. That is what the town will be held to if you go to court, the report that the town did.
Not if you can prove that it's wrong, and if you have peer review. I mean, you just won't allow it, that's the problem, is you're gonna go with that no matter what, because it makes it easy. But the fact is-
Doesn't make it easy. It'd be easier if it was in non-compliance, that would be the easy part. If it came back non-compliant, that would be easy, because the board would just say, it's not compliance, you're not compliant with the agreement, shut down.
No, because you have some contract, you know, the contract won't allow you to do that, because it showed that it was non-compliant.
Well, I just-
All right, that's enough. Mr. McKeever?
So, just so I understand here, Mr. McGraw was talking about that, you know, the town would be hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal costs. Kind of comical to me in the sense that, if I can't sleep, and I lose days of work or whatnot, but anyways, getting back to whether it's complying or not, Mr. Rand, who Ellen had just spoke about, is, he's not an ignorant man, and he has, his, his track record and his understanding of this industry is, like, amazing. And I wish that, you know, there's a lot of tension in this room, deservedly so, but I would love to have him come down here, and whether it's in a meeting setting, or this setting, or whatever the case may be, for him to truly explain the differences, whether it's compliance that your engineer gave you and, and stated was correct, and it's, the thing is non-compliant, and, and, and he could show, and this, and, and very, very, very quickly, you could understand, oh yeah, this is non-compliant, because X meets Y, and Y is Z. It's very, very, very simple, okay? And, Mr. McGraw, again, with, with the dollar value being in court and this and that, it's about money. Money. And money is better than us being complaining, me not sleeping, and, and we have to come to a solution here, you guys, and it's gotta come, and we all have to be civil about this, because in the grand scheme of things, four more years, or five more years, or a lawsuit there, uh, we don't, I don't wanna sue anyone, we don't wanna sue anyone, like, just do the right thing.
And, sir, we don't wanna get sued either, and so-
I understand that, but I wanna live, I wanna be able to sleep in my house-
I under, I understand.
Wake up in the morning and feel energized, and go make money and support my family.
I, I understand.
You know what I mean?
I understand.
And, and-
Um, you know, this is, without getting into all the history of it, this is sort of a function of the area that you live in, in terms of zoning, so let's not, I, I wanted to-
My family's lived there for 100 years.
All right.
Okay?
Fine. What I, what I want to see tonight, I think most of the board, I think, would agree with me, we can't afford to just shut this thing down. We know that's what you want, but we can't afford to do that. It would be irresponsible for, of us as a board to shut it down completely, just shut it down. So, I would like to suggest, and I'm trying this out with people, if, if we could agree to curtail, and that was the recommendation of Mr. Rand at the end of his report, that curtailment was warranted. Curtailment means restriction, it does not mean shut down. So, I'd like to suggest, maybe we can consider, if, if we can get an article on the warrant, is it possible? We, we haven't closed the warrant yet, right, Jim? We haven't even opened, we just opened, all right. So, if we can get an article on the, the warrant, and I don't know if we can make it a multi-part, give people some choices as to, and lay out what the consequences would be in terms of cost, et cetera. And, but until then, if we could shut it down for the same hours, 11 to 6, until we get to town meeting, is that something that this board would consider? And then we can take it to town meeting, and you can make your case to town meeting.
I, I don't have a problem, I will not vote to, to support it from the wind blowing from the other direction. It makes absolutely no sense to me. The McKevers don't hear anything when it's blowing north.
Are you kidding me?
You hear, you hear it when it's blowing?
I hear it 24 hours a day, 10 days a week. Whenever the thing's spinning, I hear it, and it vibrates through my house, and I've been saying that since I had it.
True.
Yes.
You're, you're a different scenario.
Well, what makes me any different from anybody else?
The location of your house.
Well, my family's been there for 100 years.
I'm just saying, it's, you're, you're the one, you're the lone person that is dealing with it.
But that's the part that gets me frustrated, Tony, because, oh, it's just the McKevers.
No, no, we never think that, I mean-
It's been like that, the, the beginning was, it's just the McKevers. Prior to the pri- this prior gene, and, and, oh, it's just the McKevers, oh, it's okay. It's all, he'll go away. And it's just wrong, Tony, you know it, you know it.
Ms. Culber?
Um, thank you.
Hello?
Just a minute, Mr. Darty.
Why don't you let him go first, Mike, will you?
All right. Mr. Darty, you had something?
Yes. I don't know how much longer I have to live. And I'm truly disappointed in this selectmen. This is the first time I've said anything negative about you people in eight years. But I'm truly disappointed, because I know there's not a member on that board that doesn't know, and believe that that wind turbine is causing health effects, and ill effects, and affecting people around it, many families. And you don't wanna take affirmative action to correct that. It's you're trying to look at money, it's you're trying to look at your responsibility, the town, the town meetings, that you just don't wanna take affirmative action, which is something that selectmen are supposed to do. I'm truly disappointed in you for the first time. That's all I could say.
Thank you.
I can go to my grave now, I finally said something negative about that board.
Before you go to Phyllis, I think we were just on track with trying to get something together. Why don't we stay on track with, we made a motion to shut it off. Let's see what parameters that can go under, and see if we can't continue that conversation.
Do we agree, as a board?
So, what, what, what concerns do we have about that? So, will the company allow us to, to decrease the production lower than, than we already have? So that's one thing we've got to get approval, we just can't do it, right?
They, they have to agree.
Right.
Yeah, right.
And, we have to get some sort of an opinion, whether we can affect the town financially by an additional, I don't even know what the, what's the number? Another, probably another 80 or 90,000 dollars?
It would, no, it'd be less than that. Because if we only went from this point until March 31st-
December, whatever. Whatever.
April 11th.
This is the, the estimate of 96, so it was not even on the close. The estimate for year round was 226. No, I'm sorry.
No, 3, 300.
So whatever the additional month is.
Right.
200.
Well, it's only, as Karen pointed out, it's only for four months.
Oh, until town meeting.
See, I, I guess I personally would like to get this out in the open at town meeting, and let people have a say about this whole issue. I think that's the only fair way to proceed, and, again, I'm not interested in getting us sued. Yes, Karen?
And we talk about, we've gone running around on this, this, the wheel about, you know, we don't care about health, it's all about money, but the other piece that is extremely important, and that, you know, I was at the State House testifying about, is there are defined levels of where it's a problem, like the EDP, like noise regulations, all of that. And, you know, putting aside, do we have that study or not, if it's in compliance with those rules, we can yell and scream all we want, we're gonna lose. You're gonna lose, we're gonna lose. And then it comes, it comes to us, we can, we can do, and we've got the best study. We can do study after study, and like, this one, we tried to get right, we, we had Mr. Darty participate, you know, we went in, we tried to do a study that would come to, as Jim said. None of us are invested in saying, let's make sure it complies. If it doesn't comply, we have tools. If it complies, we have their limited tools, and I think that's a piece we haven't talked about. And it's kind of like, you're right, if we don't have those tools, we need to go to the town and go, what are you guys willing to do? Because we do not have the authority, if that's a board, to say, all right, shut it down all the way. We cannot do that. It's a contract that's too big for us to break without town giving approval.
I, I agree with that, I said, I agree with that whole hogging, and I think the, the best tool that you, as a board, have not utilized, would be Mr. Rand.
He's like the absolute-
If you allow Mr. Rand to come here, and to have a long discussion-
We do have this, this background, we understand that this task was sent to me.
He's the best tool of that-
And we have read this, I mean, I've read it, I think more times than I can count, honestly, I'm not an engineer.
honestly, I'm not an engineer.
You're mine.
And we read Epsilon, I'm not an engineer, DEP read Epsilon, they're engineers. And, you know, it's like anything, we can, if we could, if, if the board felt that Epsilon there was, and we have to say the, from the, you know, the record used to admit, the board felt that there was a flaw in Epsilon, it wasn't done correctly, then that would be on us to have a different conversation. But we did submit it to DEP, we looked to the experts to say, they screwed this up, and I personally have not found that that's the case. Mr. Rand has pointed out some things that are very interesting, but they, you know, we have to look through our experts, and I'm not, I'm not, I, I mean, I read this, and it's, like, one of these points, I'm sorry, I've forgotten who, is the conclusions were, we needed to curtail this, and that's what we're talking about, and that was Mr. Rand's result. If this board, that's a different conversation, if the board said, you know what, we don't like Epsilon, honestly, I would say we need to back Epsilon, right? And we don't have any, anything other than Mr. Rand, who, you guys submitted to it, we did not ask him to look at it, that says it wasn't done within regulations, if you see what I'm saying. So, that's, those are separate conversations, and
Just to, to follow, if the board accepted the fact that they agree with Mr. Rand that the study is not correct, it just means you would have to do another study.
I, I guess that's where Karen went with it.
You would have to get out of the company, do it again.
Right. Said, well, this was flawed, you either make Epsilon do it in a way that you thought was not flawed or find someone else.
Excuse me, excuse me, you need to be recognized by the chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, I want to go back to the motion, I, I think, I think where we are to go through April 11th. Fully support that, and I think in reality, because it would take some time to actually negotiate, and you're right, maybe they would say no. But if we're talking through December, December 22nd, really talking 14, 15 weeks, so if the financial, I don't know where people are to get comfortable financially, you can take, we're talking seven hours per night, you can go to five AM, I know it's not going to be, I'm, I'm trying to do half a loaf here, that was, that's a seventh of the money, if that's a concern for someone, to go from 11:00 PM at night to 5:00 AM from December 22nd through April 11th, I bet it'll be on, on board. It takes some of the financial risk that I think I hear some members are concerned about, and maybe we can go forward from there from town meeting.
I would prefer to keep the hours the same, just to
I, I would too, but I'm, I'm trying to get to three.
I'm fine with the proposal to curtail until town meeting, put it on town meeting, and put it, put it before the folks, if that's, and at that point, you know, maybe we have a couple of public information sessions where the various experts could, you know, make their presentation so that people understand it, we could put it on community TV in order to educate people prior to town meeting, and, you know, it will take people like you who feel passionately about this, obviously, to, you know, try to educate the community. I, I think that's probably the best thing we can do at this point. Any more discussion? Ms. Casper?
I think actually, from May through all till, both have happened, so, I don't actually want you to go through till May.
No, that's not the proposal. The proposal tonight, that I'm just making, is, is that we curtail it until town meeting has a chance to weigh in, and town meeting is April 11th, is that right?
12, I believe.
April 12. In which, in which case, the, the, in which case the town would get to, we'd, we'd have the article written in such a way that people would have a choice as to what avenue they want to take, and let, let town meeting decide. Ms. Givens?
I will support that.
My only concern is, go to town council, go to the wind company.
Right.
If they both say it's fine to do it, then I'm fine with it.
Well, I suspect if, if we're offering to make them whole the way we have till now, that I don't know why they'd have an objection if we're paying them to shut it down for those hours.
Well, they have committed for production.
All right, well, that's
I don't know what their numbers
Yeah. So, obviously, this motion would be pending approval of town council and an agreement with Situate Wind.
It would be a request that Situate Wind curtail the operation.
Anybody want, yeah, Phyllis?
Um, one quick question, you know, if we have a thunderstorm or a front come through, we've got the lightning like crazy down on the river, the thing gets hit, and it sits for two weeks before it goes again, how does that work into the equation? I mean, with all of the production and the monies and whatnot, I mean, how many hours of when it sits for two weeks is not working? You know, and
Well, I, I suspect
And that blows my mind, that it can sit there and do nothing, and yet, we're gonna have to listen to it just to view.
Well, I think that's a function of, Situate Wind is losing when they're not producing because of a natural act of God or whatever you want to call it.
The town doesn't get hit on any of that either?
Not if the windmill's not operating, no.
Okay.
If it's off because of other forces than us telling them to shut it off, that's what it's with that.
Yes, sir, your name and address, please.
Just looking for clarification, so, I understand that the Situate Wind gets, getting paid while it's not running, right?
If we ask them to shut it.
You have to be clear about the difference. Right, so, why would you need their permission to shut it down if you're compensating them for, for the time that it's not running?
We have an agreement that allows them to run the windmill, to operate the windmill, period. And if we wish them to not operate the windmill within the parameters of their permit, then they have to agree to that.
Even though they're being compensated?
Even though they're being compensated.
Which is why they agreed to do it, right?
Well, because they get a certain price by saying, I'm gonna produce 3 million kilowatts of, of energy, and if they only produce two, then they may not make as much money or something.
So, have they presented that information?
Yes. Not, not the detail, but they've said, we have production requirements. The last time we went to them, they were like, they will consider this, but they're not like, oh, we don't care.
So, if it, well, goes to town meeting and the town were to vote to shut it off, right, you're still in breach of contract, so now they're gonna sue the town?
Well, we, we'd be, essentially, I think we'd have to provide the town with the, the serious details about the financial and legal implications, if we, whatever step we were to recommend, and town meeting could decide, do they just want to shut it down during the evening all year, do they just want to shut it down the summer, do they want to shut the thing down completely and take on the real, not just risk, the, the real reality that we would be sued?
Correct.
And, or, you know, do we want to spend precious town money fighting a lawsuit against Situate Wind? Um, so, but, you know, this is, again, these are the questions that we wrestle with, but I personally think that if, if we can have this interim measure to help you sleep at night until town meeting, and then we let town meeting decide, I mean, that's what we did, Tony pointed it out. This board voted for to, to one to not buy the border street property because we thought it was too expensive, but town meeting disagreed, and we understand that. So, we live by town meeting, and we do our best during the year when we don't have a town meeting to deal with some of these things, and I think we're offering you an interim solution, and we, I'm not gonna vote to shut this thing down completely tonight, I'm just not.
I understand that, I'm just, I've just been, just looking for clarification
Yeah.
About what would happen in the process, you know, because some of the things that have been said here tonight are true, I mean, you know, there wasn't usually, in any project, you get one-on-one opinion, right? And so, I understand the town hired a particular company, they provided a particular opinion, and that's what the town needs to go with, because that's who you contracted with, but our inability to get another company in here to get two opinions that were paid for, I think that's, that's part of what the issue with us is to, because it, it doesn't appear to us to be compliant based on the information we have, so now you've got competing arguments about whether it is, but the whole peer review issue, the inability to have another company chime in, you know, on the record, I think that's where some of these issues have come up that
Well, yeah, but we did, we did ask DEP to chime in, and their response to us did not in any way invalidate the Epsilon report, and I think we would all agree, we live in this media world where there are experts everywhere, and, you know, we can keep hiring expert after expert after expert, and at some point, you know, it's not productive, so
With all due respect, no reflection on government in general, but I deal with, I have a business that I deal with, state agency and stuff too as well, you know, I'm not sure that the DEP also has the residents of Massachusetts in their best interest sometimes, so it's a little hard for us to
I understand where you're coming from on that.
Do a particular thing.
Yep, I understand. So, is anyone willing to make a motion?
Well, I just, could I make one more comment?
Of course.
I, you know, this is an interesting proposal, part of our issues, we have to wait till we meet together to have these conversations, because that's the law. And should the board decide to take this action till town meeting, I think one thing that I would recommend is that we need to bring to town meeting, or have a conversation between now and then about what buyout we'll try to take, because that is a more palatable and non-compliant cost to the town.
Right.
So, if we were to go to Situate Wind and say, should town meeting think this thing needs to be shut down, they've got four years left on the contract, rather than have an open-ended, because we will be in a lawsuit, there's no question, if we just decide that town meeting can turn it off and directly do so, we will, it will be up late, I mean, there's no question. So, I think between now and then, it would give us an opportunity, did Jim have a vote?
I'm, I'm listening.
But have that number, because I think the town, they may say town, but that's a conversation that, if we can say, yeah, sure, you want us to shut it down, it's gonna cost $10 million.
Right.
I make it our number.
Well, I mean
Right.
If that's the number, that's the number.
Right, it's just a fact, but that would be a definable number, rather than we can vote this, but, and then we'd have to stand at the town meeting and go, we don't know what's gonna happen, but it's gonna be
Oh, no, no, I, I would not go to town meeting with anything but a very detailed analysis of the potential impacts to the town, A, B, C, D, whatever.
That's right.
No motion?
Yep. I'll do a motion then. I'm sure I do this right. So, would it be a motion to instruct the town administrator to negotiate?
Where's the one?
Two, three, oh.
I guess negotiate anything.
That's right, okay, so, a, a motion to instruct the town administrator pending, pending town council and, pending town council review, and Situate Wind LLC approval, to turn off the Situate Wind turbine from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, starting from December
Well, he's got, it's pending approval, so
Oh, until April 11th, 2022.
Second. Second by Ms. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, what's the vote, is it three? Two, we'll, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand, I said, sorry, I, yeah, sorry. Okay.
Five, zero.
Five, zero, thank you.
Instead of shut down, did you mean the word curtail?
Yes. Curtail.
Curtail, I think.
I just wanted to check.
Yes, that's the word that seems to be the appropriate, yes, please.
Sorry, inelegance.
I'm just checking, I just want to get it right.
Should we add at which point town meeting will, will decide a permanent solution?
At which point we will vote before it's announced?
Yes.
Right.
I'll go.
Just let us finish the votes, so we're clear here.
So, can I read it back to you?
Yes, please.
And make sure you're prepared. Motion by Mr. Givens to instruct the town administrator pending town council review and Situate Wind LLC approval to curtail the wind turbine from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, beginning December 22nd until April 11th, 2022, or it will go before town meeting approval.
Don't say December 22nd.
Point of, yeah, point
It's gonna be whatever, whatever the, at its, at, at earliest convenience.
I think earliest convenience.
At some point in December.
The curtailment agreement's gonna have to come back to the board for execution.
So, that would be December 21st, I think, is our next meeting?
At some point in December? Is that what the word is?
Well, it just sounds like Jim said, we, we're gonna have to vote this at a next meeting.
You have to vote to execute the curtailment agreement.
Okay.
Which To what? To execute the curtailment agreement.
You have to draft an agreement that, and then the board has to execute the agreement.
Okay, so, I think December 22nd does sound like a correct date, if we have a meeting on December 21st.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm gonna change, December 22nd.
So, you could've said that, sorry. Anything?
Yeah, that's my question, so, December 22nd is when we should expect that, if you're going, it's going to happen?
If we have all the pieces in place, including the agreement from Situate Wind.
We have presence.
Excuse me, what?
Christmas presents.
Yes, think of it that way.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You'll follow up, Mr. Ray.
I will.
Mr. Darty, are you still there?
There.
Um, I think we've concluded the discussion, if you want to relax.
Okay, I heard.
All right, thank you for coming on.
I don't know, I don't know how much I trust the town people, if the town is doing the right thing, but most of their agents
Well, an attitude like that's not gonna help you.
They don't want to be informed by that.
You have to be a little more trusting of your fellow citizens, that they will consider everything you have to say with respect, and I hope you would give us the same. Good night, Mr. Darty. Good night, Mr. Darty.
I'm pleased that you, you are heart, and you know what the right thing to do is, again, but I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to think about what the town people are gonna do, we'll see.
All right.
I hope I'm still alive by that, but thank you very much.
I hope so too, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye, good night. All right, where am I?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, good night.
You're up here at 8:00.
Are you questioning my meeting skills?
Yes, every step of the way.
Every step of the way, all right.
I would never
Got a report card at the end. All right, Jim?
You wouldn't be honorable mention, Mr.
And Nancy, budget presentation, these look to me to be all pretty routine, yes? Unless you added
Well, you have actual
A million dollars to the selectman line item.
Presentation which is in your packet, which is the PowerPoint.
Yep.
At this point, not sure the board really wants me to go through all the PowerPoint, I have the option, it has the high points of what we're talking about.
Well, I was just gonna ask, I mean, is there anything that's out of the ordinary about any of these line items? Have you added a million dollars for litigation?
Are you suggesting that we don't look at them?
No, I'm just, I'm just asking him for
I'm just asking, whether the board wants to do the overview of, of, the PowerPoint talks about where we are financially, how we ended up, 21.
I personally would like to hear that, I think it's important that the public hear that.
That's fine, I, I appreciate the large funds on the slide, and I think, I agree, I think that this is good stuff. So, you can speed data on it.
You go, we can post it.
Um, fiscal 21 ended very well, our free cash was over $5 million, which is high for us, a lot of that were turnbacks due to the coronavirus, we had put a spending freeze on all our departments, if you don't actually need to spend it, don't spend it, so there were very large turnbacks to town departments, which led to a much higher-than-normal turnback of unexpendable funds. We also were more conservative in our revenue projections, because we really didn't know what COVID was gonna do to a lot of things that we do, so we actually had better numbers in general farming seeds and new growth. New growth is really driven by 12 brothers, the new 40B down the street, Stockbridge, there's several large projects right now that are driving our new growth. It's very high, it's good, but those are gonna go It's very high, it's good, but those are going to go away within the next couple of years. And there are really, there's no large project pending before the town right now. That 40B is not pending at this point. We can talk about that later, but, so ended up very well, we maintained our AA bond rating, AA plus. We had over $3 million in various reimbursements for COVID and unbudgeted expenses through CARES and other things. We actually did such a good job with the county and our CARES that we ended up getting more money than. There were actually some communities that couldn't spend all their CARES Act money. So we got additional distributions from the county. Yes, we will, we will spend them, trust me, we will spend them and they will be spent by December 31st as required. Nancy, Pam, our entire team deserve all the congratulations in the world because every time we had a call with Plymouth County, they basically said, do it like Cituit does and you'll be fine. So we are doing very well.
Did any of that money contribute to the high free cash?
No.
So.
Well, I, I guess, I guess you could say yes in that if we needed to buy PPE supplies that we normally would have bought, we bought them with CARES Act money instead of buying them with, but that wouldn't have been a lot of money, Tony. We wouldn't have done a lot of those expenditures. Really, what really benefited from us, especially at the schools, and I think I've said this, our HVAC in our buildings has never been in better shape. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars getting the HVAC working. Really, I don't want to say it's the only good thing that came out of the virus, but really our HVAC in all our town buildings are in really good shape because we use that CARES Act funds. And get all those back up and running. A lot of things, especially in the schools, given the size of the schools, that have been, I don't want to say little issues, but kind of small things that all add up. A lot of those things were addressed and taken care of with the CARES Act money, so. New growth for fiscal 22, which is the current year we're, we're in, exceeded our expectations by $653,000. And again, those are those large projects. What that does, that builds the base for fiscal year 23. So you have your base number plus two and a half, plus new growth, that's your fiscal 23 number. So when that new growth number goes up, your number starting point for fiscal 23 also goes up and that helps in our budget. We are finally making some progress on Storm Sandy Nemo, Juneau, and Riley. We got our first legacy project, which was the Mousquashka Egypt Beach burn. That's done and we received reimbursement for that. The next large projects, as I shocked the board with several weeks ago, are on our fiscal 23 capital plan. That's Oceanside, Cedar Point, and the remainder of these legacy projects that we've been working on. For fiscal 23, just so people know, we're in fiscal 22, which ends in June 30th. Fiscal 23 starts July 1st of next year. Property tax increase two and a half percent, which is the maximum allowed by law. Again, people don't understand, that applies to the total town tax levy, does not apply to your individual home. So we are increasing that by 2.5%. Right now, state aid is level funded. We do anticipate that will go up when the governor files his budget in January. At that point, financial forecasts will meet and decide if we want to use that new number or not. I generally think it is prudent to use the governor's number because in the 20-plus years I've been doing it, I can only remember two times that the legislature's number was lower than the governor's number. So it's usually a pretty good number to use. We are lucky also in that we have an administration that has pledged to us, whatever state revenue goes up, that's what local aid goes up. So state aid, state revenue goes up 4%, local aid is going to go up 4%. So we do expect an increase of that.
Fair point.
Sorry?
Could I just ask you a question? So page 70 is really full year, fiscal year 23?
Fiscal year 23, yeah.
Okay.
Local receipts are level funded from amended 22 numbers, we did raise those. We raised our meals forecast to pre-COVID levels and new growth is forecast at a million dollars, which is high for us. But Joe DeVito has said we're going to make that million bucks. So that's our new growth. We continue to meet. Health insurance is our big unknown, property insurance right now is also kind of unknown. But health insurance, we'll get an, an idea of where we're going to be, usually at the MMA in January. We get a better idea, right now we're at seven percent, which includes the board's decision of a week ago to switch those people onto Medicare for Medicaid plans. The next really are your revenue sources, as you can see, the vast majority of the town's funds come from the tax levy. Average tax bills, what that looks like, local receipt numbers, where those go up and down. Again, we are very conservative in our local receipt estimates. As I've said before, the budget is designed to finish in the black. And you need to have conservative revenue estimates so that if something unforeseen does happen, the economy crashes and the governor says, we're going to do 9C cuts, we can absorb those without having to come back into budgets mid-year and have to reduce budgets, it gives us that flexibility. So the big challenges really are the same ones we always have with the addition of COVID, right? The revenue, the, the COVID numbers are ramping back up. I think they doubled for the state in the past week, the actual hard numbers of COVID cases. We have a new variant right now that's may or may not become the dominant variant. Are we going to go back into mask mandates? Are we going to go back into lockdowns if these numbers keep going up? Those will all impact our ability to operate going forward. Employee benefits, health insurance, we've had a couple of bad years in health insurance and that's going to be reflected in our rates. We have a couple of good years, that'll be good, but we've had a couple of bad years. It's usually a two-year look back on your health insurance. But we have seven percent, which is very expensive.
Jim, excuse me, is that related to the costs that we're paying for, it's just a rate increase?
It, really, it's, we're using far too much health insurance.
Claims.
Our claims are very high, higher than they normally should be, high claims, high rates.
Right, okay, yep.
The forshore that we're still working on, we don't know, again, that we're going to have more, more storms, more issues, more costs for that. And especially on forshore, the competition for those grants has gone through the roof. Boston all of a sudden is now in the resiliency game. Quincy never really did anything until after 2018 when they had some floods. Now Quincy is, is in those games. We're hoping to see some real increases because of the Opera money that's coming out. The federal government is putting a lot of money in that. So what we're doing is getting our projects in line, ready to go so that if at some point the state says, hey, we have money we need to spend, we can step right up in line and say, Cituit's ready to go, give us those funds. For your operating budget, the operating budget is a clean budget. There's no non-recurring revenue in the operating budget, there's no free cash in the operating budget. So there's no, what I would call a structural deficit built into that. The new growth is projected to continue the next couple of years, that will start coming down. Toll Brothers is ahead of schedule. We have a couple of contracts still outstanding. For Union, I think we're close on Tosca and AMP, which will mean the remaining one will be the fire department, we're working with them. It's, it's been a good negotiation, hopefully we get that done surely, but we've been working with the fire unit to get that done. We are looking to create a new full-time person in our IT department. You can imagine just the amount of IT that we have to do, we have two people right now. We are desperately in need of a third person. The way the budget numbers work out, that person wouldn't start until January. We just couldn't fit that full-time, full year in there with the numbers that we have now. If we get some real good state aid numbers, maybe we can, we can adjust that.
How are we with, how are we not in demand for an extra body in planning? Just with all of the projects and all of the new growth and the delays?
We had requests for approximately 14 new employees across the whole spectrum, police, planning, conservation, IT, council on aging. You know, the demand is high, the, the ability is very limited. Everything we do is based on IT. And we've added cameras, we've added this, we've added that. We just need the bandwidth so that Mike can keep up really on the high-level stuff, cyber protection, security, and those things. You know, when you have your director of IT out running around fixing laptops, probably not the actual best thing for him to be doing. We definitely need additional bandwidth, we support the library, we support the council on aging, we support the town hall, we support the fire department, we support the police department. The police used to have an officer that did a lot of IT, he's now since retired, we've had to pick that up through here. As we add skater and all the electronics into the water department, into the sewer department, that's all stuff that IT has to pick up and be involved in to make sure, because that's all linked in our system. We have to make sure. We did have, a couple of years ago, one of our pump stations, there was a, an attack on the pump station. They didn't do anything, but, you know, Mike had just thought, he's like, there's nothing, there's nothing protecting that pump station. Somebody pinged it and now we've put security on that. That goes across our whole network, but we have to maintain that. So we thought that was really an issue that we had to deal with. And it's becoming more and more prevalent, you see it ransomware for municipalities. The, the cost of our cyber insurance is, keeps going up every year. We, we do a very good job, the board has participated in the cyber training. It's actually pretty useful, especially when you start getting emails saying somebody, laptops on your Amazon account, you can understand right away why that's a scam. But we, some additional hours at the senior center, some for the food service manager Fred, a couple of hours there. Kitchen assistant that we have funded right now, we're going to continue that, we gave a couple more hours to that. And the volunteer coordinator up there, it, it's just booming, the council on aging is booming. If the board members, any board members haven't been able to get up there for a lunch, please, just go buy some there in your lunch, see what's happening. The classes are letting off, lunch is coming in, the place is full and you'll understand exactly why we wanted to build that senior center when you see the lunch crowd and the people in there, just. I go up there every now and then when I'm having a bad day because it kind of makes me feel better. Fred's got really, really good meatloaf, I highly recommend the meatloaf, when I'm a meatloaf guy. This Thursday's roast beef, but it's probably sold out at this point. For five bucks, you, you can't beat it. And really, I know some of the seniors would go there. Some of the people that I know, their personal histories, they're home, they're alone, that, if they're eating, they're eating by themselves. If they're eating at all, it's just, their friends get them up there a couple of days and, and they have companionship, but they know they're having a good meal, so it's really, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but if you get the chance, go up to the lunch and, and see it, it's, it really is fantastic. And of course, we're maintaining our road and forshore protection with $400,000 in the operational budget.
Before we go off the personnel, so you said 14 positions were requested and you have one full-time in the next cycle and adding hours to three people, is that it?
Yeah, adding hours to three people, doesn't even add up to a halftime, I don't think. We had them all up, it had to maybe 10, 12 hours total.
To the other 13 departments, we're going to figure it out.
The other 13 people, yes, are going to have to figure it out. The only other position in it, I don't believe it's on here, that we're discussing with the school department is sharing an HVAC person. In the facilities department, we had talked to Kevin Kelly about getting him a project manager because he has so many projects to manage. And then speaking to him and Mr. Dylan, they're like, we spend all our time chasing down HVAC issues. Going to buildings and it's usually not big stuff, but we have to go to the building, we have to check. So they think getting a combined HVAC person to work for both of us will free up their time to get the more.
Can you do that as contract labor?
Yeah, we, we thought about it, one, it's really, really expensive. Two, they really won't come when you need them. And three, just the amount of work and talking to them, of someone going to a school building or coming to the town hall or going to the library, just to get someone out there to balance these systems, it's not efficient to have a contractor do that, we're better off having someone here. Especially when you're building new buildings, you train them on the system, you get them running. What we'll probably get is a guy who's retired from, from the trades or a guy who's retired from the T or something, or a female who's retired, based on what we're looking to pay. That would come in and be able to handle a lot of the system, but it's, it's, according to Kevin and Bob, it's their biggest time period, it's HVAC.
I was going to say, it's really hard to find, I mean, if you could find someone, that's fabulous, that's really hard.
That's why I'm thinking into applying against someone who's retired from someplace else. That'll come in and be looking for something to do. But we'll, we'll see what we get, but it's, you know, to see Kevin Kelly coming in here and, and taking apart a radiator because the heat's not working, that's not efficient use of his time. We only have one other guy in the department that does that and he's, you know, days ping ponging everywhere.
You don't know how to do HVAC, Jim?
Yeah, I kick it, you know? Just kick it, if it doesn't come on, then you put on a jacket, right? So the fixed costs are in here, these have been better.
Jim, just a little, so Moore had a good point with planning and, and I think Karen was going there too. Can you give us a list of the other 13 people and kind of rank them in priority, what do you think would be?
Yeah, a lot of them were in the police department and, and Mark will talk about that when he comes in and we talked to Karen, we talked to Karen Connolly about it, about some of the challenges that we're going to face because of police reform. Just, I won't spend a lot of time, but police reform will eventually get rid of all the PIs that we have working for us because they won't be able to take us short in the academy anymore. So there's a lot of issues for that going down the pike. I think Mark knew he wasn't going to get them this year, but he wanted to put it on our radar screen and he'll talk about that a little bit more when.
I think there's some initiatives that the board may want to move forward with and it may need that personnel so if we could see what you, what people are asking for.
Yeah, there was. Okay. Dad.
So new for this year's budget cycle, when anyone was asking for a change in hours or asking for an additional person, we asked them to fill out a standardized form with a justification and a cost analysis. So every department that asked for a person, you have that form with that budget so you can see specifically.
It's in here?
Down here, for every department.
Look at you. Here you go. Thank you. Pam?
And if I, I might be wrong with this and I'm looking to Jim and Nancy to kind of back me or not. We just hired a coastal resource person and now we're fully fledged. So, you know, planning hasn't had, like, that whole group hasn't been whole in a long time. It's now whole, so.
The Director of Planning and Development has been, almost been the coastal resource officer instead of doing the higher-level job. So they started yesterday. Cory, do you remember Cory's last name?
No, she's very nice.
Came to us from Virginia, was moving up here.
Oh, yeah.
Kyle is thrilled we'll have her in to, to meet you, but it should allow Kyle to move back up to that higher-level Director of Planning and Development at that point. We also have the new building software, which is completely automated, so planning, conservation, all the other boards can look at plans online, sign off on them electronically. We'll have to move paper back and forth.
Oh, really? Wow. When did that get implemented?
Being implemented by the last two years.
I knew the permits, but I didn't realize like all the maps and all that was happening.
Not all the maps, but, but it's the permits. The maps are from Joe DeVito. We also have a new program in the assessors office called NearMap, is that, which is a program he uses that's really helped him capture a lot of new growth. So, but the, just the ability for planning and conservation to look at a permit application without a whole pile of paper going back and forth. In the end, I think that what it's designed to do is if I'm sitting at home saying, where the hell is my permit? I can log in, see, okay, everybody's signed off except this department. I call that department and say, hey, where's my, where's my permit?
Yeah, that's great.
Check, so.
But I didn't get to sign off.
Uh-oh.
Right, no, because we're not, you're not supposed to issue a permit if the person has taxes, fees, fines, something like that, so.
Love it.
Now any of these have to go to Pam, Pam has to check off on it too, say, well, you know, Joey Deadbeat hasn't paid his taxes, you can't give him a, a building permit.
I went to high school with him.
Joey Deadbeat? He's brothers with Joe Plummy, remember Joe Plummy?
The last couple of months revenue that's come in has actually definitely made a difference.
Great.
So if you look at the fixed costs, which is on page 76, you can see employee pension and health insurance are our big, a big dollar socks for the year, those are part of our shared costs. And the general liability goes out, part of that is, it's just going out, part of it is we have new buildings that are coming online. Obviously, it's a lot more expensive to ensure the new senior center than it was to, to ensure the old senior center. So the budget maintains level services, again, we have one full-time person plus some part-time, that's about it. Possibly another full-time. We continue allocations to road improvements, to forshore improvements. The capital budget really goes hard at the water and sewer that we've been dealing with. Of course, the biggest one there is going to be the water treatment plant. Again, we expect to have the preliminary report for the pilot program sometime before Christmas that the board will be able to take a look at. We are putting out some information to residents to get a look at what it looked like, what we were talking about and that should be going out surely. And we're going to continue to go after all our grant applications. As some of the board members know, when the governor was down during the storm, I, I asked him for $25 million for the water treatment.
Does he give you that before he leaves?
He hasn't yet, but we did have a chance, a couple of members and I got Karen Palito's attention and we're trying to set up a meeting with her and kind of let her know, you know, Cituit is kind of unique. We have water, sewer, aging infrastructure. We have water, soil, aging infrastructure, like every other city and town in the Commonwealth, and then we have the ocean on top of that, and we still have to cooperate with all the money to fund those things. And I'm hoping if we can get there a year or a little bit with some of this ARPA funding that's coming down. You know, when I talked about water and soil infrastructure, he'd asked for a billion dollars of the ARPA funds to go to water and soil infrastructure, and the legislature didn't put anywhere near that in, so we'll see.
I'm sorry. On the general liability insurance, I'm sorry, could you, for some of those buildings, could you self-insure? It's not, we're not calling Old Gates anymore, the new, like, Life Science Center or rebranding, but like for Old Gates or one of those other, can you self-insure? I don't know.
We had looked at switching off our current carrier to try to save some money, and really what it came down to is, when we had to make the decision, we couldn't get comfortable with the fact that we were covering the exact same stuff that we were covering now.
Okay.
You know, well, yeah, that's covered. Oh, wait, there's an exclusion for, so it's really not the same coverage. And we're going to keep looking at that, Andrew, because it is an area of concern.
Okay, yeah, I just, for some of those buildings.
Yeah, one of the big ones was, you know, Maya used to cover our docks and piers. They don't cover that anymore. We had to go and get a separate policy for docks and piers. Why do we want to cover that? Because we got a million-plus dollars in docks and piers, and now we're leaving them in the water. So, you know, we kind of should have insurance for those in case we get a storm that destroys a million dollars with the docks and piers. But that's now something different. Cyber insurance, a couple of other things that are outsourced, what?
Notary.
Insurance for notaries is now outsourced, it's just, it's crazy.
We don't, $900 policy, if we want to offer notarial services to the public. It's a basic offer.
If you want to do what? Notary services?
If you offer notary services to the public, it's a $900 insurance policy that we have to get.
Interesting. So, why do we offer it?
Because people expect it.
You have to, someone that's.
No, I'm going to the bank.
Town clerk's office in every city and town has always been the go-to notary. Need a notary, go to the town hall. Need a notary, go to the town hall. You wouldn't know unless you said, yeah, we don't offer that anymore.
My husband needs something realized.
And you would all hear about that in very short time. What do you mean the town doesn't offer notary services anymore? So, the fiscal '23, fiscal '22, we're in good shape right now, barring any unforeseen major storms or catastrophes. Fiscal '22 should end up in good shape. Our revenues look good. Our spending is, for the most part, on track. You know, some contracts, depending on what they settle out, we might have to do some reconciliation at the end of the year. But there's nothing right now in '22 that makes me go, you know, oh, no. '23, we're in good shape. The growth is really helping, that additional growth is really helping us, but we have to be careful not to build a budget that's relying upon historic levels of growth going forward, because those will start going away over the next couple of years, and that number will start coming down.
Well, thank you for going through that tonight.
And we could post that, we could post that on the website, can't we?
Yeah, it'll be posted tomorrow morning, the show.
Just to clarify, so, none of the ARPA or any destruct, none of the federal funds are contemplated or scheduled in this budget? Those are all extras.
Those are all extras, that's correct.
Yeah.
And they can't, they can't be used to prop up.
Purchase anything, yeah.
No, I know, I know, but you didn't anticipate doing a project in this budget, I see.
Out of the budget, we will have a discussion in the new year with capital as to what we're going to use our ARPA funds for.
That would be my question.
We have a couple of capital projects that are almost the same as what our ARPA is going to be, and, you know, we still have regional soar that would be eligible for some ARPA funds, and we expect to have an answer from Cohasset in January.
Pardon me for laughing.
So, we will have a discussion with the board about where they want to send those ARPA funds. Again, the Oceanside Ion I is about the same as the ARPA funds. Hammer Rock Water Main is about the same as the ARPA funds. And the water treatment plant, if we move forward on that, also falls within the spending timeline of the ARPA funds, so. But I'm hoping the water treatment plant gets a large infusion of cash from some other source.
That's getting the national attorney, you got that already set up?
I've spoken at length with Senator O'Connor. He has told me that he believes we are very well positioned for grant money or assistance for that when they start setting these ARPA projects up, but I would rather just have them say, here you go, and give me a direct appropriation. That would be nice.
And this is money from ARPA, not from the infrastructure bill?
This is ARPA, correct.
So, there's yet another.
There's yet another piece coming down with the infrastructure bill, the way that's going to be.
Okay.
Did you have the capital presentation from November posted as well?
It already is. And Michelle has these two items proposed tomorrow morning, she already approved and agreed to them.
Any other questions from the board, or members of the audience, such as they are?
Any questions, Pam?
Yeah.
So, the budgets in front of you tonight really aren't any of the big ones. Your budget, town administrator select board contractual increases for our staff. We put additional money in the contract bargaining line, because we do have TOSCA, AMP, and FIRE that are still not settled at this point, and we will be able to move those funds to cover additional costs for next year. Again, TOSCA and AMP, I think, will be before the board shortly. And the fire department, we're making progress, we're having, I think, really good meetings with the fire department, so I'm encouraged that we're having those discussions with them. The advisory committee is up a whopping $73.
Went up 73?
Yeah.
Yeah. Printing costs, $73?
Step by step, according secretary.
Hmm.
On the side, at some point in the next couple of months, you will be getting a personnel plan and a wage and salary plan from the personnel director and I, which we're required to have, and the town really doesn't have at this point.
Wait, what, any questions, anyone? Do you want to go through line by line? I guess I ask the overall question, and if that would satisfy the board, are there any major discrepancies between last year and this year, where you said it's all level funded?
In the budgets that you're seeing in front of you, the big increases are the general liability and property insurance, which is up $130,000. Unemployment, we decreased by $65,000, because we just haven't seen what we thought we would see for costs, and we've gotten our account up to where we want it to be for balance, I believe, at this point.
Workers' comp?
Yeah, so, we have an account balance that we like to keep, so we've gotten that up, so we reduce that. Those are really the two big ones for what you have in front of you tonight.
I was going to ask you, because there's a trend in the private sector that workman's comp is down, just because of all the remote workforce, but I would imagine that probably doesn't parlay equally to our public employees, yes?
You look at the vast majority of our workforce, the teachers, police, and fire, and DPW, and they.
Exactly. Okay, be there, right?
Yeah.
The perennial question, who does someone call up if their streetlight is out?
There's a link on the town website, you go in and you fill it out. It goes on a list. We wait till the list is large enough, and then we have the company come in and do it. We don't bring them in, lack of that term, one light at a time.
Yeah.
But there is a link on the town website, I think it's under the DPW, that you go in and report a streetlight out, goes on the list, and then we get out there and fix them in clumps.
Thought I'd give the opportunity to a public service announcer.
Except for Ralph, who grabbed me on Front Street today and gave me the list of two that are right in front of us, Alice.
Actually, oh, Madam, shall I ask you a question? Actually, just thinking of streetlights, entering into the library in the evening is very dark, like, there's not a light right at the entrance, the entrance, the driveway, the driveway. So.
With, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but with all the buildings that we've been building, with the library, with the council on aging, the issues have always been, they're too bright.
I know, I know, but there's nothing. I mean, I wonder if there's a way to look at, you know, some of that low ground lighting that's like right on the sidewalk or the curbs? I mean, you literally can't see where to turn in, in the evening.
Really?
I don't know, something to look at for next year.
Yeah, I mean, there's electricity down there, we have to run electricity.
Right.
Is there like some sort of?
It's a good idea.
Can't see it, it's.
There's solar lights.
What?
Oh, solar paint?
No, solar lights.
Reflective.
Solar lights.
Oh, yes, solar lights, there you go.
Yeah, sure.
Last Santa person.
Just solved it. Yeah. Good quality, please.
That's been a big, at the library, when I first got there, it was a big issue.
Oh, yeah, I remember, all the.
It's still an issue with the council on aging that they're working on.
But I feel like sometimes we just take, like, that huge, okay, this isn't working, and we just stop it. Like, we don't figure out, okay, but we still need to see to enter the driveway. So, is there a lower light that just illuminates the driveway and the curbing, but may not impact the neighbors across the street and next door? I feel like we take big swings at times.
I could look into it, but.
Yeah, anyway, we almost killed ourselves the other day.
We'll have to make sure those lights on the generator when we put it in.
Chew that. Okay. Any other questions about this item? Okay, can't you do that? Nope.
What's happening, what do we need?
So, can, do we want to move on to the 8:20 discussion?
Wait, we're still.
We're still, you're still.
On workers' comp, so is our, were self-insure or comp, right?
Yeah.
So, does that mean in 2022, we hit $525,000, we're going to balance in that?
We're very, it's very possible we could hit our $750,000 goal this year, depending on how the claims continue.
So, on this graph, where the spike goes up tremendously?
Yeah, last, last year wasn't bad. We used, we put more into the trust fund than we actually used for expenses, but the three prior years, it was the inverse, and we ate up the trust fund considerably.
We had a couple of really bad years and a couple of very high claims.
Well, I'm just looking at the graph. So, the, so it seems like pretty level for the last five years, and then it's like so.
Because, and you, and I'm just preaching to the choir for you, because you remember financial forecast, we had a savings in fiscal '21 and the health insurance, and we decided to put it in the workers' comp line for a single year, so that we could get the trust fund, give it up, an infusion of cash.
How much was that?
Rather than 210, we did, I think, 508, or 518, it was a significant infusion of funds.
Got you.
You know, that was just a test for this seminar, and I thank you, I needed that on the weekend.
Tested my memory. Good job.
Yep.
We're cutting it back to its pre-pandemic levels.
65, Brian?
Yeah, we haven't come close to hitting it.
We haven't paid unemployment bill for four months, because we're running on credits from, between the CARES Act reimbursements and the fraud cases coming back. There really just aren't that many unemployment plans. I mean, it is low unemployment, which is good for us.
Anyone else? Don't want to step on anyone's streetlight question. Hey, you got to get them out when you get a chance. Yeah, you do. You learn over the years. So, discuss vote authorization to sign opioid litigation participation agreements to the town administrator, Jim Boudreau.
So, this has authorized me to sign on behalf of the board, if the board members, probably almost three and a half years ago, we signed on to the opioid litigation, the nationwide opioid litigation. There are now competing participation agreements, where you either participate through the law firm, or you participate through the state's attorney general's office. Given what happened with the CARES Act, and in speaking with the representatives in town council, we're better off going through the law firms for the distribution, because the state took most of the CARES money from cities and towns and then give it back out. So, this would authorize me to sign those participation agreements, so the town is in line when they start distributing the opioid settlement funds, which potentially could be in the spring.
Any idea on the amounts?
No, not granular down to us. And the vast majority of whatever you get has to still be spent on education and prevention. So, it could actually time out just right for us, because our FACS is funded through a federal grant. We're in the second five-year federal grant, and then we're not eligible for an element earlier, two, five years. So, if we can get a couple of years of the opioid money, we can use that then to fund FACS as the federal grant goes away.
That'll be good.
So, but rather than come back to the board every time we need to sign the paperwork, I just checked with council, she says, yes, you should execute that. So, I'm asking for authority to execute the settlement agreements for the opioid litigation. I'll have to sign up tonight, they need them tomorrow.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move to authorize the town administrator to sign and approve opioid litigation agreements.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries. Now, discuss vote declaration of surplus, Nancy Hope, town accountant and finance director.
So, as you've had a listing of donations at the beginning, now we have a listing of items we want to sell. The first on your list is One Tilden Avenue. This is a residential property that was recently foreclosed on by Pam. This is a vacant property that was condemned by the Board of Health for a lack of compliance with sanitary code. This property is on for auction January 13th, so Pam, under her role as custodian of tax title possessions, has the authority to sell it at auction, but we're just trying to comply with Chapter 30b, Section 16, and have the board declare it a surplus as well. The property is in a good place, it's two houses back from the water. Unfortunately, it has no sanitary septic system. So, it is expected to do very well at auction, because it could potentially assist on a tight tank.
I was going to say a tight tank.
About as wide as this room, maybe, might not be that wide. It's a very narrow building.
Be like a skinny house in.
Very small lot, yeah.
I think it might be in your packet, the auction offering, which shows picture of it and its proximity to the water, so we hope that it will do well at the auction. I commend Pam for her work with resolving the tax titles, especially these properties where there is no harm, no foul, it's a neighborhood blight, so you really want to get it resolved. These funds, when it sells, will close out in the town's general fund revenue and become part of free cash in the following year.
Does it always have to close out that way?
No, as you know, with the mine and fire station and the former senior center.
Where you put to the senior.
Those monies go towards the cost of the new senior center. So, town meeting can direct them someplace, but in lieu of a town meeting vote directing them, depending upon the property.
And tax title foreclosures.
Well, I wonder if it goes to forshore protection, since it's down in that area.
Tax title foreclosures are a different animal. They can just be sold. Selling a town asset of land, it depends on how you got, received that asset. If it was, if there's any type of requirement in the deed that it'd be for parkland, you have to then reserve the funds for something else, so you need to see the deed. The nice thing for ease for a tax title foreclosure is that it's just revenue.
Depends on the property.
Okay. Do you want to take them all together, or do you want to?
Yeah.
We'll do them all together. You also have a wonderful list of surplus equipment from the DPW, so we'll have all kinds of parking spaces now, wherever this stuff is stored, varying motors, sweeper, Um, varying motors, sweeper, tractors, um, and then some stuff from the sewer department, including a microscope. Uh, we expect all of this to do well, and if you declare it a surplus, it'll be offered in online auction in the coming months with all the other things that you have declared. We also have, um, a list of computer equipment, a very, it was probably in your pack, not in your, um, electronic packet, but in the handout, uh, of all the equipment that is available that, uh, from the IT department that can be sold. And just to remind you, because of the CARES Act, we did replace a lot of our equipment, um, because of remote access. So we have more than what would normally be expected to be, um, declared a surplus and sold. And then.
No.
We're gonna do them. Go through all of them first.
Can we do them all?
Um, and then the final one just came in, and that was from the fire department. Uh, they had a, uh, a wheelchair van that was given to them by the Council on Aging a few years ago. It has mechanical problems and they do not have a use for it, so they asked that it be declared surplus and that it can be, um, sold. It's a, in a Conaline van.
It's thirteen years old.
So.
All right.
I, I had no problem. As I said to somebody today, I, I feel like the Girl Scout trying to get their cookie badges, like sell, sell, sell. But we've done really well with our options, so.
No, you did very well with them.
So thank you, I know it's a lot of work, Nancy. Recouping on the other end.
If my colleague's down on the other end of the, the table would stop talking, we could actually hear you.
That's all right, many people have wished I was immune for many years.
Where are we? Would you like a motion?
Please.
A couple of them.
Madam, up to Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Uh, move that the select board declare that the property at One Tilden Avenue is surplus.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Madam Chair, would you like?
Yes, please.
Okay. Move that the select board declare the listing of equipment from the Director of Public Works as surplus, so that it may be auctioned at the next online auction held by the town.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Move that the select board declare the listing of retired computer equipment from the Director of Information Technology as surplus, so that it may be auctioned at the next online auction held by the town.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Move that the select board declare the wheelchair van under the control of the fire department as surplus, so that it may be auctioned at the next online auction held by the town.
Second, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hope. And thank you for the surplus property auction. Or tax title, whatever it is.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thanks for staying.
All right. Next, unless I've skipped something, I always tend to skip something. New business. You skipped something. One day, um, back up one day wine and malts. New business.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Look at that.
Sorry.
Oh. You're getting toasty here.
All right.
Okay. Discuss vote one day liquor licenses.
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Joseph Norton for a private event on December 10th, 2021, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the Malaney's Fish Market at Eight Allen Place.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
And move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Joseph Norton for a private event on December 11th, 2021, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Malaney's Fish Market at Eight Allen Place.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries. Discuss vote, board and committee appointments.
Does anybody have any, um, objection to my making a motion to appoint Alexander Pease to the cable TV committee?
No objection.
Okay. Um, I gotta find all the pending stuff, one moment. Okay. Move to appoint Alexander Pease to the cable TV committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest in online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries. Well, tenant board member, Situate Housing Authority, very enthusiastic group of applicants. Does anyone want to put someone forward or?
I was really impressed with, uh, the last campaign, Herbert Osborne. That was very strong.
He was very strong, yeah.
Yeah, oh, good.
Yeah.
Move to appoint Herbert Osborne as a tenant board member to the Situate Housing Authority for a term of five years. Wow. Or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law, online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second, second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen, did you? I didn't.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for the quiet because honestly, I hope all of these people stay engaged because they're.
It is true.
That's why you said quietly?
No, because I was mulling.
I couldn't, and I, that's why I, I don't, I don't hear mulling, I only hear yes or no.
I said aye, but you replied, muted by the colleagues.
So, did, did Cor Lorraine get that? Five zero, who seconded it?
I did. It was Mr. Benyani and Mr..
Thank you. Five zero, motion carries. Um, and with our thanks to all of the candidates truly, and to reiterate what Karen Canfield just said, I certainly hope that they'll all stay involved to the extent that it's possible. And they're from different, you know, places and different walks of life, and all seem to have great ideas, and we wish we could appoint everyone, but we can't. So, um, hope they stay interested. Uh, discuss vote renewal of drain layers licenses.
Move to approve renewal of drain layers license for Sean Farrell Excavation, Inc. and Saquarito Environmental Services, Inc.
Second?
Second.
Four seconds. Um, second by Ms. Curran, you're closest to me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries. Discuss vote, open annual, April 11th, 2022, annual and special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, I'm not sure the motion's right yet, but.
We're doing this on.
Yeah, that's the one. I was probably.
Is this right, Nancy?
Here, are you going to open it tonight and then close it in December 21st?
Open the warrant for the annual special town meeting to be held on Monday, April 11th, 2022.
Two weeks.
Move the select board open the warrant for spring annual and special town meetings to be held on April 11th, 2022.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries. Discuss vote, 2022 annual license renewals. I had to do this last year.
I'll do it because I'm hungry.
Okay. You're gonna read it fast, huh?
So, you have this, I printed it, so you don't have to read it off and compare it. And just a quick thank you to Dev Cop, who did an amazing job for first general job. Neil Doggett from the Building Department, Al Lee from Fire, Jerry O'Brien from Police. There's a lot of work. All these properties have to be inspected by all these departments before they're uprenewed, just so you know.
Thank you to all. And they renew every year, right?
Every year.
They have to check fire, laws, buildings, everything.
So the citizens should, should feel they're in good hands having all these places inspected and certified and.
Safe for the community.
Yes. Thank, thank you to everyone who works on it.
We saw Deputy Chief out there inspecting the field. There's only a two left, I saw.
Wow. Nice. All right, so Mr. Benyani's gonna read this.
And Ms. Canfield.
Okay.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following in holder licenses for 2022. Oh, in hold. We're missing an N.
Already?
The in at Situate Harbor. Are we gonna do them all or?
Yeah. We don't want to stop and second.
Usually in category, we do it by category to, after that's not category.
All right.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Move that select board vote to renew the following retail package store and all alcoholic for 2022. The Amaya Liquors doing businesses Green Bush Package Store, Kishon, Inc., doing businesses Situate Package, I'm sorry, did I say Green Bush?
Don't be rude.
Situate Package Store, Ward 143 LLC, Lighthouse Enterprises doing businesses Harper's Side Wine and.
Scaring again?
Second.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Move the select board vote to renew the following retail package store wine and malt licenses for 2022. Oldie Cross Investments, DVA 711, CCO Holdings, DVA Driftway Market, Malaney's Fish Market Corp., Sand Hills General Store, and MFJ Market, Inc., DVA The Village Market.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Sorry. Move that the select board vote to renew the following restaurant wine and malt licenses for 2022. Cosmo's Cafe LLC.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Interesting.
Aye.
Yep, sorry.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following restaurant, all alcohol licenses for 2022. Front Street Situate LLC, DVA Chopsticks and Forks. Grateful Haven, Inc., DVA Riverside. Green Eye, Green Eye Lady, Inc., DVA Galley. Ivernia Tavern, Inc. Millby, Inc., DVA Parker Tavern. Nanna Enterprises LLC, DVA The River Club. O'Callens LLC, DVA The Voyage. Salt Society, Situate Tavern, SCW Corp., DVA The Millwork Restaurant, and Restaurant Oro, DVA Oro.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Sounds like a lot of aliases, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Canfield, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
What do you do, Ms.?
The next one? We vote that to recue.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following club, all alcoholic licenses for 2022. Situate Post 3169, The VFW Incorporated, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, Situate Country Club, Situate Golf Club, Situate Racket and Fitness Incorporated, and the Town of Situate Widow's Walk doing business as the North River Grill.
So I understand that people need to recue themselves on a couple of these, so, um, how about just motion for Situate Post, The VFW?
Well, which ones do you need to recuse?
You're the yacht club.
And her.
Uh, yacht club and you have them.
Why don't you both just recuse yourselves and the three of us will vote and it'll carry?
Situate Yacht Club, yeah.
Okay. Don't want to.
All right, we're just gonna do it all together.
Screw it up. All right.
Tony, you're all three of those as well?
No, just Situate.
So they're gonna recuse themselves from all, is that correct? Fine, just to make it easy, Lorraine. So it's just the three of us. Do I hear a motion?
I read it.
Oh, you read it.
So I'll second it.
Second. Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero, motion carries. Do you want me?
Two of standing, that's right.
Oh, my turn. Move that the select board vote to renew the following club wine and malt liquor licenses for 2022, Situate Racket and Fitness.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Move that the Situate Board vote to renew the following Farmer's Series pouring permit for malt licenses for 2022, Untold Brewing LLC.
Second, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries. Bless you.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following pound plate licenses for 2022, the Inn at Situate Harbor, Ward 143 LLC, CCO Holdings doing business Driftway Market, CDW Enterprises doing business Coffee Corner, Tarnic Gourmet, Sorses Bra, Cosmo's Cafe LLC, P's Woodpile Pizza, Economy doing businesses Trust Pizza, Gateway Donut doing businesses nothing known as 32nd New Driftway, Gateway Donut LLC doing business nothing known as 105 Front Street, Green Eye Lady doing businesses Galley, Harper's Side Cowherd House Pizza, Tennessee News, Old East Investments doing businesses 711, Left Make Eat Liquors doing businesses Green Bush Package Store, Lucky and Cafe LLC, Persson doing businesses, uh, Package Store, Marisa Pizza, Inc., Marylith News, McFoskey's, Inc., doing businesses TK O'Malley's Sports Cafe, MFJ Market, Inc., doing businesses, the Ocean Market, Bill B doing businesses Parker Tavern, Mike's Situate Harbor doing businesses Sam's, London Harbor, Malaney's Fish Corp., Restaurant Oro doing businesses Oro, Adalana's, uh, doing business Ethelon Pizza, Quen Shereeshoo Street, LLC, RCSJ R doing businesses Dribbles at 4 Brook Street, 365 Gannett doing business, uh, as Dribbles at 367 Gannett Road, Sand Hills General Store, Situate Tavern, Situate Racket and Fitness, SAI Convenience doing businesses Dad's Place, Sanon, Inc., uh, doing businesses Roni Jones General Store, Starling Bakery, LLC, Parker Tavern, Front Street LLC doing businesses Chopsticks and Forks, O'Callens and So, Green Eye Lady, uh, doing businesses Galley, Hathaway, uh, our queues from Hathaway Country Club, um, Hadrian and Tavern, SW, SCW Corporation doing businesses Millwork Restaurant, O'Callens doing businesses as The Voyage, Nanna Enterprises doing, doing the River Club, Great Farming Events LLC doing businesses Riverside, Salt Society, Situate Country Club, which is doing, I will recuse myself from, Situate Harbor Yacht Club, which I will recuse myself from, Untold Brewing LLC, Situate Post 3169, uh, the VFW, Town of Situate Widow's Walk doing business as North River Breck.
Second. Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as noted.
Five zero, minus the two notes of Situate Country Club and Situate Yacht Club recuses.
I'll put Mark and Karen on as those for, maybe the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd just like to move to the following entertainment licenses for 2022. The Barker Tavern, United Lady, Inc., DVA The Galley, Hathaway Golf Club, Ivernia Tavern, Lucky and Cafe LLC, Millby, Inc., DVA The Barker Tavern, SCW Corp., DVA Millwork Restaurant, O'Callens LLC, DVA The Voyage, Nance Enterprise, DVA The River Club, Grateful Haven LLC, DVA Riverside, Salt Society, Situate Country Club, Situate Yacht Club, McFoskey's, Inc., DVA TK O'Malley's, Untold Brewing LLC, Situate Post 3169, VFW, Inc.
Motion by Ms. Curran on those we can't, refuse on the others.
Yeah.
Okay. Got that, Lorraine?
Yep.
Okay.
Seconded it.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries, minus the two that have to not vote.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following septic licenses for 2022, All Town, Inc., Roni B, Inc., doing business as KR Anderson Plumbing Company, Rosanna Davis Sanitary Pumping, Inc., PF Spencer Jr., Inc., Spirit to Environmental Services, Inc.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries.
Move that the select board vote to renew the following bowling and electronic games license for 2022, Situate Bowling.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion carries. Aye. Five zero. Motion carries.
Move the select board vote to renew the following Class II licenses for 2022. Alfred Coil. Jim says Secrest Auto, Driftway Auto, Inc. O'Brien's Diagnostic Repair and Citrate Shell, Inc.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five zero.
Move the select board vote to renew the following Class III licenses for 2022. Ryan Allen LLC. Christopher Litchfield, doing business as Ray's Repair Shop.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Motion carries.
Move the select board vote to renew the following Taxi and Livery Services for 2022 licenses, excuse me, Coastal Livery.
Second. Second by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, can I ask Lorraine a question?
Yes, certainly.
Do we have a wine and malt license that's available in town?
We do have a package store license.
No, but like a restaurant one?
Wine and malt, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As rumor has it.
Yeah, I was just curious, because everybody keeps saying something's gonna happen. I'm like, nobody's come to see us, so.
I keep saying, I don't know, nothing about it.
Down in the new building down on Front Street.
The old Sylvia's. Big rumor about a wine bar.
Nobody went to the planning board to get approval for anything. Yeah, it's on the December agenda.
Some people watched the town update a few weeks ago.
About Sylvia's?
I talked about it.
The wine. I'm sorry, I didn't watch it.
Says we don't know what's happening.
I don't, apparently.
There's nothing in the plan, right? We don't know anything officially. Right?
There's a term by the planning board.
It's before the planning board.
There's nothing.
Correct. But rumor. But I can still ask the question if we have any licenses available.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no.
Did you cover that? All right, before we go any further, liaison reports, anyone? I haven't really met with anybody since the last meeting.
Yes? So the Charter Review Commission Committee received comments from our ministerate and we unfortunately lacked a form at our meeting, so we will have, we scheduled a special meeting next week, I forget what day, to review these very thoughtful comments that will improve the document that we'll see. But I want to re, early not to wait until after public meetings if there's something in there that really you think needs to be told because hopefully by the time it comes before the board again, it'll be fully finished. I did want to just bring to the board the mention that not the liaison. Jim and I had the opportunity to sit down with Representatives Frank and Cassick today and have a little chat about moving the conversation on Regional Steward a little further along. And the cliff notes are that we likely put a placeholder on the April town warrant for approval of an intermunicipal agreement. Doesn't mean we're getting there, but it means they know we have a deadline that they either have to go up or down, and that's what we need to know. So they have agreed to have their boards meet in the next month to just say yes or no. So that's an improvement. I'm not super encouraged, but at least we've had the conversation.
Well, do they have to go to their town meeting to get a similar approval?
Yes, but as will call if they do. But we ask them to commit to their force to supporting leadership and that we're not inclined to go past April to have this conversation. Would you help her with your what?
Intermunicipal agreement.
Oh, intermunicipal, okay. And then.
But even if we do have it on the town, on the warrant, it won't have any effect if they don't move forward. So it's not, it won't harm us to agree to do it.
No, we'll have a placeholder. If we don't have an agreement, it's ice over.
Okay.
And that, that expression would basically be to authorize us to contact Jim or however it is to, we go to that, and I'm sure we will have it by then. But we will have all agreed to have them forward and we'd see if they're able to come to town. The last thing I wanted to mention, which I don't know, neither of you mentioned it, is in this January, we will have no board representation in our town update. And we'll have to assess our neighborhood, because we want. But in an effort to streamline, I think that's what we decided, right?
Oh, no.
No? Oh, okay.
No.
I thought that was the final.
And I just haven't drawn up the schedule. I think what, I think what.
There was a conversation.
The conversation was, just so everybody knows, that we're trying to keep the weekly updates down to less than 10 minutes, ideally more on the ish, seven-ish. And I think Seth was going to talk to Superintendent Burkhead about being a little more concise. I think we are encouraging the select people to just talk about what's coming up.
Okay, so that's still in play, but the goal is.
We're just trying to tighten it up.
Yeah, I thought all those suggestions were great.
And I sent them to everyone, so I'm.
Because Tony talks too much.
Tony always talks too much.
I'm not supposed to.
But Tony loves him.
So, but, but I think, I think the general agreement was that everyone likes Jim the best. And that's the truth. So when you're out, when you're out in town with Jim, they all say, Jim, Jim. They think, and they tell me that. Jim's great, so. Anyway, made a TV start. He's like the Ted Cockle of Situate.
Usually know what they say when they see me.
So, anybody else liaison report? Yes, Ms. Curran?
Well, I don't have a liaison report, but.
I have an objection to what I just said.
No, but I, we need to congratulate our fabulous football team. So I had the privilege of meeting Keegan Sullivan that morning. I did not know who he was. I wished to block him when he walked out the door. I said, who is that?
He was like a superstar.
And they said, you know, he's the receiver, so I said, okay, please catch a few. So, great job. You know, so exciting for them. So, no, it's wonderful. Yeah, it's terrific. Congratulations to the coach, Herb Devine. He's had a great winning season, a good record, right?
Yeah. I saw Andrew at the game. He had about 10 kids with him, I don't know if he kept them on. But it was a great game. The team played fun. It was one of the best football games I've ever watched, including all the pages. They won the last game, the last play of the game on a two-point conversion that they failed to get when they played them in the regular.
That's very deep point.
And it was phenomenal. The coaching staff, the town, it was packed, four sections were packed with town people. It was a great turnout. And I want to thank, you know, the Gridiron Club and all the people that have made the game so much fun this year to go to and all the kids going to High School and make those some things. And Robin Sullivan, all the other people that are really there that helped just promote it and make it a fun, fun event, perfectly. And that was a great way to cap it off.
The crowd. I cannot believe how many people. Amazing, number one. I'll embarrass my son. He was like, you can't even do that on Playstation. The fact that they won with, you know, 30 seconds left, that was epic. So much fun. But the people that came out, it was, I couldn't believe it. It was that half the town was there. It was so, so much fun and congratulations and go for two. I couldn't believe it. It was awesome, so.
WBZ News had the big clip of it and they basically said it was one of the best games they'd seen and how exciting it was, so.
That's exciting.
Yeah. So congratulations to all of our.
Players, coaches.
Coaches, athletes, parents, everybody. Anybody else? No more liaisons?
Good thing they don't.
Yes. So, correspondence.
Well, there's a lot, but I will.
It seemed to be a lot. Maybe just summarize?
Summarize, so Situate, just, one of the big ones, Situate Facts. They're rescheduling their alcohol beverage training that got canceled because of the storm. It's gonna be on December 13th. If you, and anyone who had signed up previously, those businesses, you don't have to re-register. But definitely check out Situate Facts to make sure that they do that. So make sure we got that in there. Thank Community Christmas, talking about Giving Tuesday. Again, thanks to that wonderful organization for all that they do and supporting local business. Also, South Shore Irish Heritage, just recognize that they wrote in to thank the town, DPW, everyone for getting those Irish flags out on Front Street a few weeks ago to make sure that heritage was there for the ambassador.
And he noticed.
I love it. Also want to thank our good friends, the Town of Marshfield, for the letter that they sent over to DMF. Again, discussing the issue we've talked about a lot. Again, the letter to Marine Fisheries about opening up the shellfish for recreational.
Shell fishing.